I need. Um, Steve Biella, Jr.
Steve Biella, Jr.
Um, they can have.
Yes. We have a quorum and just excuse Mr. Biella. Is everyone on Zoom? Are you all muted? Please, if you're attending by Zoom, double check that you are muted. We're having feedback. What would you, what would you like me to say? Is it, is it feedback? No. Okay. All right. Who are you asking? Anyone online, can you please confirm that you can hear the meeting?
Yes, I can hear it.
Confirmed. Yep.
Confirmed.
Thank you. And so now we're going to go into the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All righty, Commissioner Business, we have a request regarding approved Bennerup re-subdivision at eighteen twenty-nine, approved re-subdivision of eighteen twenty-nine Orchard Road to excuse installation of underground utilities for a new residential lot, number ten dash one eight forty-five Orchard Road, per the Berlin subdivision regulations fifty-two oh thirty-three. All right, yes.
Eighteen forty-five Orchard Road is the new house number.
Eighteen forty-five? Is this the Pistol Holdings? Is this the Pistol Brook?
It was a Bennerup subdivision of the old house with the new lot next door that they've now built a new house, and that is Pistol Brook Holdings that has built the house.
And this house is on?
Orchard between Prior Electric and Mr. Bennerup's old house. The brand-new house just off the Berlin Turnpike.
I, oh, 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 okay. For some reason, I'm thinking Kensington Road, yes.
That's a, yeah, okay, an overall subdivision application. This relates to a previously approved subdivision.
Ah, got it.
I believe Mr. Demore is here to explain the request.
Okay. Welcome.
How are you? Mark Demore, Pistol Brook Holdings.
Okay.
As Maureen explained, this is a lot we purchased from Mr. Bennerup. It was a being subdivided property. It was a, as far as we knew, it was a previously approved building lot. We purchased the building lot, built the house, applied for, an electrician had applied for a permit for overhead service, all the service. And then once, I mean, this was just brought to our attention when we were going for, CO approval, submitted the ASB, and it was brought to our attention that this should have been underground for power.
Okay, so it was all installed and then now you've discovered that. The regulation says you're supposed to put it underground.
Showed, given the, the map that showed that the two lots had lots split.
Yeah.
There wasn't anything on the property that let us, just to be clear, there's no underground power service on any of the, on that whole road. All the power's on the opposite side. You know.
You, you mean the, the poles, the utility poles run on the other side of Orchard Road?
They're in requirement for infrastructure installation so that they get power on the ground at that house. Whether it be additional poles or.
Or send it under.
Like I said, we, this is something that was brought to our attention.
Okay, questions from the Commission?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, this is the house that was built right next to the new business that was put in.
Yeah.
The heavy-duty, the new business that was put in, are the utilities under the ground for them?
I believe that they are. Okay. All right. Underground. There, you actually did dig a trench.
A fire building, okay.
Yeah, they, you dig a trench and it's a conduit and it runs underground and, okay.
Yeah, but. But the rest of the houses on the street have the lines above.
But, yeah, but those houses were built back, I mean, God, those houses really date back.
And that business that was just put in was put in, what, a year ago, if even?
Yeah.
This is what's abutting right up against this property that he's referring to.
I'll be honest with you, it's a lovely, it's a lovely home. Yeah, it's a lovely home, but I really think it would, it would detract from the house to have the power lines that are going to overhead. I know, but.
I mean, personally, for me, I think it's consistent with the rest of the houses on the street. I understand the business next door has underground, but that's also set way further off the road. And this was only a one-lot subdivision. It's not like it was ten or fifteen lots on a big piece of property. So I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the request to excuse the installation of underground utilities.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rogan. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. George. Further discussion on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, our regulations do say they go underground. Basically, what they have to do is put a pole on this side of the street, bring the wire across, across the street, and go under the ground to the house. That's, that's the, the way all subdivisions work now. And I know of a lot of houses that had one or two subdivision lots that, you know, they put the, lines underneath, and it is a cost, but that is subdivision regulation now. I, I don't agree with.
Okay.
Yeah, just to be clear, we did something, where we subdivided the property on.
Spurcebrook.
And we put it underground. It was, you know, this was a separate house.
You make sure you lean into the microphone. Thank you.
You guys get all that?
Yeah. I think it's just for the recording and anyone joining us online. Okay. Yes.
I know you're in a motion, but I just want to point out that I have, and I shared it a couple of times while you were talking. It didn't get to the chance that, you can barely see it, but the, whoop, did the wrong one. I pulled it up on the aerial, the GIS, and the utility poles are very hard to see, but you can see them here, here, you know, along the road, which I think is probably shown in the pictures, although I, and there do appear to be utility poles through the site on, of Prior Electric. I don't know if his business has, was put underground or not. Off the top of my head, I can't remember. I don't know, but I do see some utility poles.
Okay.
As well as, these are the ones along the street, if you can even see them, very pale colored.
Yeah, well, I'm having a hard time just seeing everything these days. All right. Looking at a computer too much, I think. All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, so all those, now the motion was to, to allow. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Raise the hands, please. And those opposed? Well.
Emily.
June, Diane, Brian, and Scott Hamel.
Rogan, Hamel.
Yep, all voted in favor. And opposed was?
Miller and Tignot opposed.
And myself. Yeah, opposed. All right.
Still four in favor.
All right, so the motion carries. All right, have a good day. All right, on to the public hearings. Item A is the extension of a special permit per BZR eleven P, Berlin Lions Agricultural Fair. Oh, I have the, well, okay, better read the, read the notice.
Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearings. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings on Thursday, September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, at seven PM in the Town Council Chambers, Burlington Town Hall, two forty, Gundogan Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Ensured said parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearings in person or remotely as provided below. A, proposed re-subdivision of Paul Pryor, Jr., for two lots at zero Heritage Drive, map twenty-five dash one block seventeen lot fifteen K, request to re-approve expired approval. B, extension of special permit, Berlin Lions Agricultural Fair Incorporated, four-ten Beckley Road, new event, display Christmas trees, display event. Remote access to this meeting is available on Zoom video conference under the following links. Dated this fifth day of September twenty-twenty-three at Berlin, Connecticut. Brian Rogan, Secretary, Berlin and Planning and Zoning. New Britain Herald Legal Notices slash Classified Advertising. Dates of publication, Saturday, September ninth, twenty-twenty-three, and Monday, September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. So now we're on to the extension of special permit for the Berlin Lions Agricultural Fair, four-ten Breckley Road. This is a new event, Christmas tree display event. All righty, so I believe that we, we have Attorney Dornfried, who represents the Lions Club on this issue, and I believe we have him on Zoom. So welcome, Attorney Dornfried, and can you give us a little information about what the Lions Club is looking to do?
Uh, thank you. This is Joe Dornfried on behalf of the Berlin Lions. The.
Can you just hold on one minute while I try to change speakers so? Hard, difficult to hear.
Okay. Is this any better, or I'm not sure how to improve it?
No, it's not coming through our, our Zoom, our overhead.
Hmm.
Just bear with us.
Can you test speak again?
I can. Hopefully, this is a little better.
Not yet.
Sorry about that.
E. Gads, that's wonderful.
We're all set now, thank you.
Okay, please go ahead, Attorney Dornfried.
Thank you. This is a new event that is based on some, I'll say, community-based events in other parts of the country, but in essence, we would, late November, early December, have a display of Christmas trees at the portion of the fairgrounds, which would involve trees sponsored by local neighborhoods, businesses, schools, civic organizations, and it would just involve a, if you will, a walk or a stroll through the fairgrounds for folks to view the displays. We would have some hot chocolate, and admission would either be for a cash amount, or we might stuff a cruiser, or do a food bank. It's intended to be more of a community involvement, community spirit type of event. The, there'd be awards that we would give to the best trees, and that would be in the form of a charitable donation to be made by the organization. So there's, it's still evolving in terms of the details, and because we want to try to get this pulled off this year, and that will help be, if you will, a little bit of a learning experience. We wanted to get it before the Commission, and while we don't anticipate that there'll be a large crowd, we do anticipate on weekends, it may well involve more than two-hundred-and-fifty people. So we wanted to be careful and be cautious and make sure that we went through the right process. Eventually, this event, if it did become very popular, it could expand, but for the first year, we're not expecting this to be a, a major undertaking. We're just going to cordon off a part of the fairgrounds. If you're familiar with it, near the north ticket gate, where some of the buildings are there, and have that stroll be, if you will, on that, that corner of the fairgrounds, not the entire fairgrounds. By any means, just because we don't expect it to be the event that, that draws that much participation in the first year.
Okay, let me ask you, is this, I see on the dates, you have Thursday, November thirtieth through, through Sunday, December third, and then you skip to the seventh, so you're just actually going to do like two sets of long weekends? Is that what I'm understanding?
Right, that's.
And you know that on Thursdays, we usually have planning and zoning, so we're not going to be able to come, right?
Well, one of those, one of those Thursdays, hopefully, you can. Or during, or during the weekend, depending on.
Oh, all right, okay, I just want to make sure that you won't have.
And hopefully, the weather will hold up that we don't get a lot of snow early in the season, because that would really put a damper on it.
Yeah, yeah.
You should get a planning and zoning tree.
There you go. That's.
All right, I'm going to put you in charge of that committee, Tim. Any questions from the Commission? Ms. Miller?
Madam Chair, Attorney Dornfried, as far as the off-hours, when the, the locks will be closed, are you going to have patrols at all, or anybody watching the area? So there's no vandalism? To any?
Yeah, that, I, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, so I won't give you a false answer, but I certainly can give that feedback to the, the organizers of it, meaning the folks on the committee at the, on the Lions Club. I, I do know they would have, you know, obviously, the gates would be locked, but let me, let me make a note about that, and I'll certainly provide that feedback. It's a good idea.
And the only reason why I ask that is because we have the scarecrow contest and
Yeah.
put a lot of effort into that, and, you know, we do have some people who don't enjoy our community events as much as others. So I'm just thinking about that.
All right, very good. Anyone else with questions? Let me just ask a little further, if I may, regarding the Christmas trees themselves. Is this something that, if, if we decided as a commission, I'm going to use your example, that we wanted to do a Christmas tree, do we go out and buy a Christmas tree and then have a, you know, register with you, or we bring the tree in, or?
So assuming things work out as successfully tonight, there'll probably be more publicity, but we have arranged, I think it's through Upbeat, to acquire trees. So we're, we're using the local, if you will, community to further get involved. So we're purchasing, let's just say, for discussion, I think it's fifty trees. And that, what you would do is you, we would, we would arrange to have all the trees put on the fairgrounds, and you would just be responsible for, for decorating it. So you don't have to go buy your own tree. We don't have people who show up with, I'll call it massive trees or some small trees. Everybody has the same tree, if you will.
Okay, all right, terrific, thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Anything from staff that you want to add in?
No, I do not.
Okay, it's up to you. All right. Anyone have?
A motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Rogan.
A second.
Second by Ms. George. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed or moved? All righty, on to the next thing. The next one's going to be the application of nineteen oh six Berlin LLC. This is from Christopher J. Smith, Esquire, Alter and Pearson LLC, submitted pursuant to the Connecticut General Statutes H dash thirty-G Affordable Housing Land Use Appeals. Shows as item two, application of site plan approval to permit a fifty-two-unit multifamily residential communities, Spurcebrook Apartments, on real properties known as nineteen oh six Berlin Turnpike, map twenty-one dash two, block one-one-five, lot seven, and nineteen thirty-four Berlin Turnpike, map, map twenty-one dash two, block one-fifteen, lot eight, and zero Berlin Turnpike, map twenty-one dash two, block one-fifteen, lot eight A. This is a continuing public hearing, so I think we all have some information in front of us. And welcome, Attorney Smith.
Back in town attorney, record, my name is Chris Smith, and I appear before you, before you, excuse me, I'm a behalf owner applicant, nineteen oh six Berlin LLC. Not sure what you have in front of you at this.
More, more than I care to.
Information, I don't know if Mr. Handfield has had an opportunity. I know at the, I think it was at the last meeting, I don't know if it was sixteen seventy-six or nineteen oh six that, I guess it was this one. He was, had not completed his review of the material, the prior material, having just returned from a, being out of the office, so.
That was submitted today and copied, and I'm looking for your copy.
Okay.
As I speak.
We also did go to the Wetlands Commission and to review the issue with the mapping, and at this point in time, they have continued that matter to October third. And a third-party consultant is being retained, apparently, to go out and confirm Mr. Coles' report. If you recall, Ian Coles is the wetland soil scientist, certified wetland soil scientist and registered soil scientist. I may have reversed the order of that, who had prepared a report back in, from January of twenty-twenty-two that we had submitted to the Commission. So that's being reviewed.
Okay, so Wetlands, you're still in Wetlands over this issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that, that question, they're going to, I was close to the, having them act on it, but again, they've retained somebody to go out and confirm Mr. Coles' report. And I, I don't know the status of that at this point in time. Town Attorney Capola may have more information for us.
Thank you.
Good evening. So Ms. Juicy and I did communicate with Jim Horrible, who is staff to the Wetlands Commission. He has reached out to a number of potential experts to take a look at this issue, and he's advancing that at this point, it, he's waiting, I think, for, for a quote from somebody that he's made contact with. So that's the status is, at this point, no one has been officially retained. He's, he's still working on that, because they just had their meeting last, last Tuesday.
Okay, so. So I guess I'll ask staff, or both of you, if this is still in Wetlands, I would, I'm, I'm not sure that we should move forward on discussing this tonight, because we want to find out what Wetlands has to say, right? And the, the third-party consultant.
That's been the procedure.
Yes.
Didn't catch all that, but it would seem to me that we, we have to review Mr. Handfield's correspondence. I think he has to review some of the material that we've submitted in response to the last one that we received to him before the other public hearing last week, two weeks ago.
Yeah.
So it would seem to me, and I think this might have been what you said, Madam Chairman, that we should, this should probably go over until the Wetlands matter has been addressed. I would respectfully suggest, because we are running light on time, that we, the applicant, continue to work with the consultant to respond to any comments that he may have. In this case, he, Mr. Chalder, I, I know, has had further comments during this time period up until we hear from Wetlands, so that at least we've done that when we finally hear from Wetlands. Wetlands meets on the third of October, and you were going to meet on the seventh, but that's been for the fifth, and that's going to the twelfth.
That's correct.
I may have to.
Give an extension.
I may or may not be available, and if I am, it'll be remotely, but then, at that point in time, hopefully, we can, we could be, the applicant would be hopefully providing you with whatever final information we have in rebuttal, assuming that the Wetlands agrees with Mr. Coles' report in that a Wetlands application is not required. Again, if we can continue to work with staff, Mr. Snow is, is compensating, then it makes sense that we continue to do that if we can.
Yeah.
And keep that, keep this going here. As you're aware, the text amendment application for nineteen oh six has been closed. And so again, what we will continue to do is the applicant will work with Maureen, your town planner and town attorney, and the outside consultants to be responsive, and then hopefully, after the third, we can come in with our final rebuttal if, if those questions have been resolved. You may have some other questions and comments that come up from the Commission between now and then as well, so.
Yeah, okay.
I have a.
Yes.
Couple of comments.
Sure.
So we do have the town consultant available, and he has provided comments today, based on the newer information he's gotten, and had been working with the applicant's engineer on some of the issues. I would defer to him if he's would prefer to give comments tonight than, than wait.
Okay.
And also the concern of waiting until the twelfth for any new testimony, as shown on the agenda. We have, I think, twenty-five days, extension days remaining. That would provide for the hearing to close on the twelfth, but doesn't provide to continue all the way to the nineteenth. Is just shy of getting you to the meeting after that, so I would be concerned that any new information comes in.
Yeah.
That week that then can't be responded to on either side or study.
Well, could the applicants give us an extension at this time? No? I have to wait until I, I, I burn out the clock to get an extension?
No, no, that's the end of, the extensions, the available extension days won't go till October nineteenth. October twelve would be the last scheduled meeting date.
Then we got to make this one.
Okay, not actually sure you have a special meeting before that time period.
Okay.
Right, so whether or not any other, whether any comments can be vetted prior to that, so that any comments can be responded to, I would be concerned with.
So Ms. George is thinking of, or she's considering that perhaps we need a meeting between the twelfth and the nineteenth. Be prepared to do a special meeting there. But I'm not sure, the twelfth is a, is a Thursday, correct, obviously, and so the nineteenth?
It actually brought us over the weekend, just the twenty-five days, but I will recount it right now if you can.
I'm looking at this report that I could self-hand it in today, I guess. And there is items that have got to be cleared up between the applicant and the consultant here. Almost every item, almost, as I see here. So I think that's got to be cleared up before we can go to the, you know, the, all the, all the concerns, concerns of the consultant that we have and our staff, they have to work to. They have to work together with the applicant here and get all that done. If we're going to make a decision on the twelfth or whatever day we go to because of the time constraints. So. I think there's a lot of work that's got to be done between now and then anyway. And.
And then, of course, you have the Wetlands.
Do nothing tonight because we got to listen to the Wetlands like we normally do.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's the whole thing. I usually don't like to proceed without the other commissions already giving it the go ahead. But let's see how those dates break down.
So the, I get twenty-five days comes out to Monday.
I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt the, with the discussion, but are we talking about closing the hearing?
It would use all the extension time to go, all the extension time would be used if you were to. Not close the hearing until October twelfth or with a special meeting on Monday.
Okay, I, so, so that means you would have sixty-five days after it's closed within extra rendered decision. And. And I think my client, Mr. Snow, who is. Tending remotely would not have an objection if we end up going to the twelfth. I presume that we'll close on the twelfth. Be an incentive for the consultants to work with the applicant. If you, if the commission has any concerns. I think we're fairly close to being done with our responses. And, and then the commission can close the hearing and make a decision as you see fit at that time. So my point being that I think be an incentive again, just to get things wrapped up. For the commission, so you can close it on the twelfth and you'll have sixty-five days to render decision.
Well, I guess, well, I don't know. Diane, were you going to add anything to that?
I guess the concern I have is that we're in a position where things are still changing that. We may not see until the twelfth and may have questions. Or want more of an opportunity to look at the application besides the night of the twelfth, but I think. We would be wise to schedule to the sixteenth if everybody's agreeable, just to have. That time to. Give fair consideration.
Yeah.
What's presented to us at the last minute.
At this point, we'll consent to the twelfth and we can revisit that additional time period if it's required.
How much notice do we need for a special meeting?
Done on the twelfth.
That could be done on the twelfth if we wanted to call another meeting on the sixteen. I thought we needed seven.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, that's, it's not a problem. That's, that's fine.
Okay, I just want to make sure because I don't want to, I don't want to be jammed into a corner. I want the be, the commission to be able to consider thoroughly the application and then, of course, all the feedback that we have. All right.
I, I do still. Wonder if. The technical review of Brandon, if he might have some. Talking points for you to think about and you might want to share tonight.
Okay, all right.
Again.
I wouldn't have given a few.
You don't have to do the testimony tonight. It's choose not to take testimony, but he's available. He's here and he has made some points and he has been dealing with. He may have some specific.
Okay.
If we don't have the, the. Public hearing, then no one can say.
We are in public hearing right now.
We are.
Well, we are. How can you take someone, one person's information and not the applicant and everyone else's?
They should be, absolutely, absolutely. Both sides should be able to offer whatever they want to offer, right, of course. Can I just?
Yes.
One quick thing, just, this is just a, because I did, I did review this. I read it quick earlier when it came through. And then I just read it again because I had printed it out. I read it, I had read it on my phone because I was in a meeting. But. There are some comments here from. That indicate, for, for instance. And I'm looking at, I guess, the top of page two. It says, earlier written responses from the applicant provided. To the commission stated that cut fill volumes, materials and methods would be added to the plans. They have not been added as stated. This information should be added. So just one thing, I guess, if we kind of could. At this point, I, I mean, is, is there agreement about what? You know, what those methods are in particular, because I just feel like if, again. If they're going to take until the twelfth to exchange this information. And then they disagree about the methods, I, I mean, that's not going to be good for the commission to. To be able to wrap their arms around that at that juncture. I mean, can't they agree that this is going to be done? I mean, you have another, you have another meeting next Thursday. You know, a special meeting that you scheduled. I mean, can, can they agree to, to get this done within the coming week? I mean, because if it's something that is going to take further discussion beyond that. Maybe you need to hear from them about this. I, I, I just, I see that in, in a few places that there's. There's stuff that, that needs to be added of that nature specifically and, and, you know, if they're going to add it. And then there's going to be some disagreement about the methods in particular. Then that's, I think, something that should be addressed sooner rather than later, so we could figure out if there's this agreement, so they can. Have some time because they're going to be up against it again.
Yeah, and, and glad you caught that and I'm happy that you had a chance to review these. Unfortunately, when I received them, I wasn't able. To review these, these notes because they were received today. And I'm not sure the rest of the commission had a chance to, but if you want to talk about a few things, I mean, that'd be, that'd be fine with us.
Thank you. Chris Smith, for the record, Madam Chairwoman, it's a great idea. Danville is here and I, we just received this as well.
Okay.
May I make a clarification before we get into these comments? This is, this is Brandon Hanfield, sorry, your, your consultant.
These are your comments, okay.
They are, yes, they are.
Yes, okay.
Before we get in, there's been a lot of conversation that these arrived today. These comments are no different than what were in the letter of nine seven. I simply extracted them. From the ones that were addressed, so it's a summarized version of what you received at your nine-seven meeting. And most of these comments also showed up in my July letter as well. So they're, they're repeated comments. Some of them were new based on the submission in August. But I, I don't want it to be seen as these are new comments that arrived today. They are, they are comments based on the information received on Tuesday. And most of them are very similar or the same comments that you received two weeks ago.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Can I ask a question on that? Is that, are you saying that? You provided these comments to the applicant. And the maps haven't been changed or agreed upon. In that time span.
No, I, I guess what I'm saying is, if you look at that number one comment. That comment has been on that in, in my letter since the July. The July number one review letter. It, it hasn't changed where I asked for authors or. Confirmation or authorization from the abutting property owner be entered into the record. We had a meeting with the applicant and we, we were told we would get that in some form. I, I haven't seen it and, and so the comment just keeps repeating itself because I think it is vital to the application and it's something that. We should put our eyes on that, you know, it involves another property.
Yep, absolutely. And.
And if we could, Mr. Bill would like to respond to the engineering related comments so that maybe there could be a little understanding here as town attorney has suggested.
Okay. That's fine.
That can be done.
Yep, and I just want to make sure the mic is catching that because I want to make sure that the folks online.
A little one.
And the ones here. Can hear what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, this is, I'm Danville from Zuvik, representing the applicant as his design professional. I have been in touch with Mr. Hanfield. I would like to talk about particularly the. The stormwater drainage system. So starting with number four in this letter.
What, hold on, the stormwater, are you talking about the, the thing, the issue that's before inland wetlands right now?
No, the drainage.
Is this a different?
Drainage system.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is Brandon. Do you have the new letter in front of you or are you looking at?
I do, so I'm, I'm starting with number four and I realize that that's not relating to pipes exactly, but it is about stormwater runoff. So the potential for erosion behind building five has been considered. I did. A computation for the swell behind that building estimating the. Velocity of the water on that surface. And I believe that the landscape plan or one of the materials plans shows erosion control matting in that location. So in my professional opinion, the potential for erosion is appropriately mitigated behind building five. I'm going to skip up a little bit to cut and fill, so that'll be number, oh, number five, okay. Regarding cut and fill, a report was submitted with the cut and fill volumes and Brandon is correct, those numbers have not been shown on the plans. However, the process for placing fill and compacting and testing the fill. Is listed in the notes on the grading plan.
All right, so that brings us to Attorney Capola's comment around the methods. Regarding the fill. So what methods are we talking about when we talk about the fill?
The fill will be placed in twelve inch lifts. It will be compacted and field tested. For the achievement of ninety-five percent of the theoretical compaction value, so. There's a nuclear gauge that comes out and a certified professional to actually verify. Periodically throughout the fill process that the fill is being compacted. And that is, that is listed on the grading plan.
Do you, do you have that grading plan? I'm sorry, the, the version I have does not have that note and so I just want to. We, we haven't been in disagreement that you can add it. I just am pointing out that. I haven't seen it, so if, if there's a grading plan I haven't seen.
I apologize, I don't know exactly the number of the note and if it's. If it's not in one of the notes in the general sheet, maybe, maybe it's on the site layout sheet, I will find that note for you. It is in the plans that the contractor will be. Required to perform that testing.
Compaction stuff. The house that's there, fill area that that house was put on. Probably fifteen years ago, more than fifteen, twenty-five years ago, probably. That was not compacted or filled to standards. That area there. Are you considering anything about that area that has not been compacted correctly? Because that was the problem when the house was built, whatever date that was. And, and so that never happened. Seeing that we're going to be putting big buildings on it or bigger building home on it. I would like to see some kind of compaction. Method for the, the area that you have there, either taking that. Out of there, taking that fill and putting it in where you are, compacting every twelve inches. And then refilling that area. I don't know. What the process would be there, but. I, you know. That didn't happen when, it was just dumped and dumped and dumped and dumped until it got to that elevation. So that is a problem to put buildings these sides on that non-compact soil than that small house that's under.
So the fill that'll be placed will be, will be structural fill. The. In walking the site, I did not notice any. Obvious failures of the existing soil. The foundations for the buildings will be designed and certified by a professional. And like I said, the fill replacing will be compacted to a. To a specification.
Oh, that.
As for the existing subgrade. You know, it's, it's. It would be up to the foundation designer to certify that.
I would ask our consultant to take that into consideration of how that should be remedied there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to work with Dan on. Making sure the proper certifications are reflected on any, any plan you do consider, so that, that's just what I, I want to see. And if I missed it, I apologize. I still can't find it. On the plans I have, but it, it's, you know, Dan and I have spoken about it and, you know, he agreed it would get onto these plans. I don't see a reason why it can't, to make sure there are certain safeguards in. Applied here where there, there is a foundation design that's done based on actual testing of the material that's in place today. And then also in consideration of the fill that will be placed under the supervision of a, of a professional that can certify its place correctly, so. If those safeguards are added to the plan, it adds an element of. Safety to it where even the building officials don't have to. Certify that fills place correctly. They have a professional in the field that does it for them. And provides the, the information that can go in the file. So those are the safeguards we're looking for on the plan. And if, if I did miss it, just direct me to it. I just want to make sure it's there before we move on.
Understood. I, I will not be able to review those plans during the public hearing today, but I will get back to you on that.
All right.
Regarding silt fence, number eight. We have added a few measures over the course of the, of the project to the erosion sediment control plan. If. Intermediate rows of silt fence were required, I would suspect that that's more means and methods than what I can dictate to a contractor and how he should stage. The filling of this, of this site. That, that would be, it would be typical that we would not dictate, I mean. I, I would, I would be inclined not to dictate to the contractor how he should stage the site, but rather it is up to his means and methods to contain his sediment. Through the satisfaction of the engineer and the town.
If, if you would like.
Yes, Mr. Hanfield.
Yeah, it, it's, this isn't a big one. The, the request was simply. Trying to protect what is going to be a very exhausting filling and compacting and testing process to bring the site up ten to eighteen feet. And you're going to have half the site that doesn't have to be touched while all that work's going on. And trying to prevent runoff flowing from south to north into that filling area is what I was concerned about and. And Mr. Vill and I did talk about it. It's not a big ask to try to isolate those two work areas from. Allowing runoff to go through a filling site. Where soils will be unstabilized and very high soils, so it, it was a pretty small ask. I do agree. That i, i, if Mr. Ville feels the plan is adequate, it's, it's his certification. It doesn't require DEEP construction stormwater permit at its current level of less than five acres. So the town would be approving the erosion control. That he has and there, there are safeguards where the town or engineer can specify more, but I do think. Adding silt fence at the toe of a very steep slope where they're going to be filling for, I don't know how long, you can tell me, is not a big ask.
Okay, thank you.
I would say that the, the response to number nine is similar. I, I agree that these measures are required. I, I'm reluctant to dictate to the contractor how they should be executed. And ultimately, the goals are, you know, if the goals are to contain the sediment to the site. Those goals will be met by the measures shown. Regarding stormwater management, the proposed contours have been added to the utility plan in black. They're subtle and they're intentionally subtle because if they were bold, it'd be pretty hard to read the plan, but. You will see there are two sets of contours on the. On the submission dated. September nineteenth. Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, yeah. Looking now, you might be right. I might have just. It's not, again, not, not a huge comment. I was just trying to check, check all the structure elevations and, and I, all I asked, I think in my comment was that. If they're not on there now. It's not, again, not, not a huge comment. I was just trying to check, check all the structure elevations and, and I, all I asked, I think in my comment was that if they're not on there now. They are, should be added.
They are, they're, it's a fine line, so they're, they're subtle, but they're there now.
Yep.
So that comment's been addressed. And then. Detention pond. Uh, so no measures are shown for access and inspection of the detention pond. The intent there, after adding the hydrodynamic separators, um, is to. Leave them sealed, um. Where the, the maintenance point is really those separators and we don't expect any, any um. Debris to enter this, the chambers. The chambers as designed are better left intact and penetrating them. And putting risers on them and adding manholes to the parking lot. Adds a, you know, an additional maintenance item that I'm not sure will see much return from. So it's my opinion that these. Structures need not be accessed. Periodically.
And just, just to, to clarify my comment, um. Any proprietary. Product you get, all, all I'm asking for is a construction material and design submittal. From a professional engineer, um. Most of the systems that are underground. Will have it at a minimum, an inspection port, which is a small diameter. Riser to pavement so that you can actually peek in and make sure it is working. Uh, see if there are sediment in it, um. In, in all designs, I prepare with, with large cavity. Uh, underground, I typically connect a two-foot diameter pipe from a structure so that you can climb in there. Uh, of course, within OSHA guidelines, but. Um, at a minimum, I do think most manufacturers will supply a small diameter inspection port so you can see in with a flashlight. Uh, and make sure it is performing and see if there's any issues. Um, one of those issues could be that the, the pipe itself is damaged during. Filling and construction. Uh, which frankly recently happened on a project I had where. Uh, the extremely large lull lift driving around the buildings uh, did not. Follow our delineation of the underground structure that was installed. Um. Punctured the top of it because there's not as much fill and those things are very heavy. Um, and their workers filled the hole back in and kept working. Uh, and, and we found out by climbing in a manhole that it was collapsed, so. Uh, there is value to being able to see inside these things to make sure they are, they are adequate. Uh, and, and I think a manufacturer prepares them can, can provide those construction plans. Uh, so it's, it's a simple thing, and I think that can just be a condition.
I, I take no exception. Um.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then your, your comment for the separators is similar, right? You wanna see a, you wanna see a, a design for those separators at construction and.
Yeah, again, you can specify it all you, uh, uh, we can specify the brand on this plan, but it might change and, and the, the most appropriate thing is to have the manufacturer design it to their specifications. They have PEs on staff that certify it meets the two thousand four water quality manual. That gets submitted to the town for the record or the engineer of record, Mr. Ville. They approved the submittal and we know that you got a separator that meets um, are your requirements as well as the state requirements. Uh, and the drainage design that they prepared, so um, I, I think it's the simplest way and it's an easy condition.
Be happy to work that out with your building inspector or building department, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, I, just.
Is there anything else, Mr. Handfield?
Uh, no, I, I want the, the letter itself, I want to be clear, Dan's been super responsive. Uh, I, I tried to make that clear in the letter that he did address uh, the, the hy- hydrology and hydraulic comments I had. Uh, I, I didn't. Put uh, five more pages into the last letter going through those small technical details and, and Dan did go back through the report. Uh, and made some tweaks and, and my letter hopefully makes it clear that he addressed those issues. Um, and they're no longer in this letter, so we're, we're down to the, the short strokes and um. There's, there's a couple major ones. Again, I, I, I. Don't wanna harp on it, but I think that. The authorization of the abutting owner is, is one of the high, highest. Uh, levels of importance of, I tried to put in my letter, I think. The commission should have confidence that the abutting owner is at least aware of the application. Um. And then I think one other thing we, we keep glancing by in our conversations. Are the items that. The applicant is asking. For the commission to accept something less than their standards. It doesn't mean they're not. Um. Engineering adequate, it just means they're not up to your standards. So there's a couple of them. One is the separation of the parking to the center buildings. That's been the same since it started. It's less than ten feet. So the parking spaces are less than ten feet to the center buildings. Um, in our conversations earlier, we asked if there are any other measures could be added. Uh, I think they're relying on the curb. Which is, uh, it's a fine decision in, in their opinion, um, but I think the commission will have to consider that. As it doesn't meet your standards, and I don't know if, and, and the attorney can correct me, but I don't know if that's been changed in the language of the regulations. For this uh, project or not. Uh, but even if it has, it's something the commission should get, get to consider. Um, and then the other one, I believe was lighting. So I just spoke about.
Don't think the lighting appears in this letter, but you're correct about the, the lighting, the um.
Sorry, I might have dropped that one off by mistake, but. Um, yeah, so they, they did submit in writing. Uh, uh, certain IES standards that they met. Um, which are less stringent than, than the town standards of a minimum of three-foot candles or a maximum of six. Uh, in my nine-seven letter, I did acknowledge that those thresholds are, can be difficult to meet without excessive number of lights. Uh, but they did submit standards um, that the, the commission will need to consider for this application. That don't necessarily meet. Um, your minimum lighting thresholds. And I will say this, on a residential site, three minute, three-foot candles minimum is pretty bright. Um, so uh, it, there will, there will be a pretty. Bright level of light at the footprint of these buildings and at the first floor windows. Um, so just something to consider, given how close things are to the parking.
Uh, to the, our, to our consultant, uh. Have you taken into consideration the slopes behind this building? Cause I, I've looked at all. My plan's probably a little old, uh, that I have right now.
Building five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The slopes uh, toward the rear of buildings seem awful. Steep to me, uh, and I know our. Single-family residential, uh. Uh, has a. Usable space of thirty feet or thirty-five feet. Of area either on side or rear of, of, of residential structures for. Uh, residential use. And I don't see those here in this plan, uh, so I'm just wondering if uh. Under uh. Residential condo situation, basically. Uh, those, those regulations apply or not? Because uh, you know, in the single-family residential. Or two-family, they have to have thirty feet of uh, rear yard or side yard to work, work with, work. Picknick tables or whatever they want.
Yeah, I, I, to answer your comment, frankly, I didn't, I didn't. Review that regulation for this development as a, you know, multifamily. Um. In terms of spaces, yes, it's very limited in terms of the spaces people have outdoors. Um, and I don't know that any spaces were officially designated. For recreation. Uh, but specifically to your question about grading behind building five, in my first letter, that was my primary concern. Was the steep slopes behind building five and then the steep fill slopes around the uh, western and northern perimeter. Uh, and the revised plans that came in in late August, they moved building five, I think ten or eleven feet further north away from that slope. Um, so they weren't undercutting that one point two to one point four to one existing slope anymore. Uh, so they did provide another ten feet. They also removed that thirty foot or thirty-one foot excesses, I believe. Um. That we, we spent some time talking about with Mr. Trelder at the, uh, I think. Man, I'm losing track of meetings here, but it was a July meeting. Um. So they did move it away. They're no longer undercutting that slope. It is still an ex- a steep existing slope. And um, the, I, I think the engineer has, has in, in their plan. Um. Addressed it to their certification and professional opinion. And if they're not disturbing that existing slope, which has been there a long time. Uh, it's their responsibility to make sure it is stable, uh, but from my standpoint, they were undercutting it before and I was very concerned about that.
Yes, I, I don't know if to recommend a terrace in the backyard uh, or, or what, because. Those slopes were pretty bad and uh. You know, uh, terracing them out may be. A solution. Uh.
Right. I, I think the other solution could be that, that building could be built into the slope, um. Kinda like uh, the, the other, I guess, buildings, one and. Two are walkout basements. Building five could be built into the slope so that you could actually fill up against the foundation and reduce the slope, so that. Though, those are alternates that are something I would consider. It's not, I don't, I, I don't wanna try to design this site. Um, but that is an alternate, is, is backfilling up against the back wall. There are issues with that in terms of egress and, and bedroom windows. Um. But, you know, there, there are other ways, but I, I will say they did make an effort to, to address my initial concern with steep existing slopes. And undercutting them. Uh, my, my remaining comment about the drainage behind building five is kind of the remnant of that. Where they're swaling it down another steep slope of one to one. And again, it's a small ask to make sure those slopes are stable. Um, and uh, you know, hopefully the engineers have taken that into consideration.
Okay, anything else? At this point?
I would like to respond to one comment that we received from the commission directly, um. You asked me about the planting plan, and so I did update the quantities and added some labels to that, so I hope it's. Um, fully explained now and that you got what you needed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for now. Alright, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I just, I really wanna highlight comment number one. I think that is critical.
Yeah.
That we get those documents. Um.
Yeah, it's a biggie.
So.
Okay. Alright. Well. Okay, go ahead.
I was gonna say, thank you for the opportunity to do that, and Mr. Handfield, I think Mr. Ville will follow up with you, and if there's. Any further questions you have as to where something might be on a particular sheet, for example. I can follow up with you on that, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Commission.
Alright, go ahead, Maureen.
Your other consultant may have just indicated he wanted to speak. Uh, Mr. Tolder?
Oh, yes, Mr. Tolder.
Uh, thank you very much. And in my uh. Comments back in June and the updated comments on September fifteenth, I do wanna point out that I think there's some elements, the architectural drawings that haven't been provided or still aren't clear. So we keep maneuvering around this issue, but. We have the buildings in the center of the complex. I'll call it in the island. Those are apparently the handicap units. But you may recall in their design of the buildings, the first floor units, one floor are. Um, the one-bedroom units. And it's the second and third floors that are dedicated to the two-bedroom units. I'm not quite sure how the applicant intends to get a handicap person up to the second and third floors. So either the units have to be reconfigured with the two bedrooms on the first floor. Or something else which is code compliant, so it's an issue I continue to bring up and, and hasn't yet been addressed. Um, Mr. Handfield just mentioned the concept of a walkout basement on the northern buildings. The floor plans don't show that, so it looks like a foundation with windows in the back. But it's not showing any stairway inside the unit, et cetera, so we, we're just miscoordinated here in terms of exactly what the drawings say. I'm pretty sure all these issues can be worked out. I just think they need to be worked out. Um, so I didn't want all the attention to go to the site plan over the next three or four weeks. Without bringing the architected along so that we now have a package and the commission is comfortable acting, so, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much for pointing that out to us again. Anything else from the commission on this one?
Yes, when we were just talking about architectural, uh, the turning radiuses of the driveway was a concern. Uh, before. And I still have concern of those turning radiuses with the school buses. Uh, most school buses out today are the flat nose. School bus, front tires are up pretty close, they're prompt. And uh. The, the wheelbase is pretty short. That means the big tail spin on the, uh, spin on the back of the bus. Uh, the way that the. It was designed, and actually I saw on the drawing, uh, when they put the little line through. Uh. That the tail swing was go get into this parking places. On the corners. Uh, so if this car's parked. Towards the, the road a little bit and not pull up to the curb. There's a, uh. Chance of tail swing getting those cars. Uh, they all, and uh. Known driven bus for fifty-two years, I. Figure out that tail, tail swing will get them. Of a new driver especially.
Uh, for the record, Danville, the sheet we're looking for, Maureen, is almost all the way at the end of the set. And I forget if it's turn one, turn two, or turn three. Um, describes a school bus and the school bus we used. There'll be a figure of it up in the corner. There we go, turn one, I think, yep, this is the school bus turning movement. So if you take a, a close look at the model of the school bus in the top right-hand corner of the screen. Um. You can see um, that there's a, a large overhang on the, on the rear of the bus. The, the kickout on the turns is modeled in this figure. Um, and so the lines. The, the pathlines represent the outer limits of the bus. And we were pretty careful to. Uh, execute this figure so that we don't overhang any parking spaces and we don't cross that center line inside the site. Um, so conceivably, um. They, you know, a driver could cross the center line and have lots of swing space, but the uh. The layout is adequate for the bus modeled, and we also modeled some bigger fire trucks as well with the long ladder overhangs and. They were all able to get in and out.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? I know we're in the public hearing, but we're also. Um. If there's anyone here from the public who wishes to address this applicant, this application. Um, or comment on it, it'd be great. Um, I will ask if you've already spoken on it, because this has been going on. For quite some time, unless there's something new to add. Is there anyone online who has any comments? Or concerns at this point? Okay, here are none.
So, seeing as we got an extension.
Yep.
From the applicant at the beginning. Um, I will make the motion to continue till our next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rogan. We have a second by Ms. Jorsy. We're in further discussion, so go ahead.
Hey, um, I am concerned that we get, um, if you continue the hearing, I'm sorry, I missed the beat that you. Try to continue it to, that we get. Um, response in plenty of time prior to the meeting so that. Information can get. Processed, reviewed, looked at, et cetera, in both directions, you know, both from. The applicant and then response from our consultants and the staff, so. Um, just asking that maybe there be a commitment from. Um, applicant as to when the. Um, a response would be available to any of the newer comments.
Okay.
Right.
To a specific date.
I was, I haven't, uh.
She, he, I don't think he got that.
I haven't. Yeah, yeah.
It's okay.
Okay, just.
Um.
So it's October twelfth? Yes, but go, dovetail on her.
So. Being Chris Smith for the record, Mr. Ville indicated that we can do that. And I would, uh, I know you're in the middle of a motion, I'm. I understand that because I heard it. I don't know if I can speak during it.
I'll rescind my motion.
I was gonna suggest if it happens, maybe just till next week, and then if next week's just gonna be continued, then it could. As opposed to putting it over and then maybe we can take care of something next week, that's all. But if we can't, then perhaps we can report in. And um, and then not have to.
Oh.
Have that on the, addressed at the meeting for you to be continued, but the goal would be to get that information. And uh, take in whatever additional responses we can at your next meeting, which I understand is the twenty-eighth, the week from today. And um, it might put us in a good spot for closing on the eighteenth. After we are from wetlands, possibly.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve. That's okay. We're all getting confused.
Been a long day.
Yes, okay, so. Um, entertain your. entertain your
Yes, so I'll make a, I rescinded, so I'll make a new motion to continue until the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Our second of September.
Of September.
Okay, thank you. And we had a second fight.
Again, if we do it the next week, it won't have wetlands. Wetlands is October third.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, but we can get some of these civil engineering issues out of the way, maybe.
I understand, but we usually don't do or need that stuff until wetlands makes a decision on application. Uh, we're a little behind on stuff because that's the normal way we do it. Okay, and and I just to do application, like tonight we did some stuff, but uh do anything on this application before wetlands comes back and says yes or no. I'm just watching procedurally, uh. I just questioned and I
They can't make the decision.
The point, and I can't, we can't make this.
Yeah.
Until wetlands.
So are we, are we spinning our wheels by saying that we're going to talk to them next week? Or should we just go right to the uh twelfth of uh, October?
My logic is that we are still dealing with a lot of issues and there is a time crunch. So if if we deal with some civil, um, with the engineering comments and that we need additional information, now come the twelfth, we're not dealing with these engineering issues and not being able to have the time we need to.
Well, that's a good point. And wait, what? Wait, we, we, we're still in discussion.
Yeah.
We're still in discussion motion. Could we take testimony from our consultants or no?
All right, then I made another one.
We made another motion. All right. No, no, no. So, uh, so we'll just go to the next meeting then.
If there's nothing to be said, then it's nothing to be said.
So your original, so your original second motion stands
Yeah.
To go to the, a week from today.
Yeah.
Okay, and the second, okay, we're good. All right. Were there some further discussion? All those in favor? I, those opposed are moved. Okay, so it's going to go to the next.
Unanimous, I'm sorry.
Yes, it was unanimous. Okay. What's up next? Oh, application of Little House LLC prepared by Christopher Smith. Alter and Pearson LLC submitted pursuant to Connecticut State chan- uh, state statutes eight dash three G. Affordable housing land use appeals. This is the proposed zone text amendment creating a new eleven dash eleven, uh, section eleven EE planned residential infill development. Inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity or workforce housing component. Okay, so this is the text amendment. Okay, I don't want to, go ahead. I'm going to catch up.
Okay, good. Uh, for the record, um, good evening. Chris Smith of Alter and Pearson on behalf of the owner applicant, Little House Living LLC. Uh, this is the zone text amendment. Uh, we had completed our presentation. However, Mr. Miller, Brian Miller, did submit a report, a supplemental report that came in. He presented it, uh, if you may recall with the other application. Uh, it is part of the record with this one. If you would like Mr. Miller to provide you with a summary of it as he did uh, with the other matter, uh, the other application for nineteen oh six, Mr. Miller again is in attendance. Uh, but other than that, we did not have any further presentation to make to the commission concerning the zone text amendment.
Okay, um Mr. Miller? You were perhaps prepared just to give us a overview? See, he's online, but yeah, he's there.
Brian?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, there you are. Is there any information that you want or a synopsis that you wanted to provide to the commission at this point regarding the text amendment?
I think, Ryan, it's Chris Smith. I think I'd indicated that you had filed your supplemental material dated August thirtieth, I believe, twenty twenty-three. And had provided a summary with the other application. I didn't know if the commission wanted to rely on your report or if they wanted to, uh, you would be willing to, obviously, to provide them with a summary and respond to any questions.
I do apologize. I was thirsty. I went downstairs to get some seltzer.
No, 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 you're not allowed.
That's why I'm home. The, um um, no, I I think I went over it pretty well at the last meeting. Um, if there's any questions, but I haven't. The the only thing is we, I did look at well, oh, we're not on a, uh, we're on, we're on the other one. Okay. Never mind. Um, no, I I just, um, I don't really, I think I went over it pretty well. I said that, uh and, um, you know, we had our response to, um, the, uh text amendment, so, uh I don't, I don't know what else I need to point out at this time.
Okay, so at this point, nothing to add, right?
No, no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for my tardiness here.
No, that's okay. What, you know, as as it is, we are just feverishly searching for our copies of the text amendment. Which is sort of buried in the papers here.
I can understand that. Well, oh, here we go. Yes, here, this is, yeah, I I presented this uh, twice at the last meeting, I I believe. What treat to the application.
Mm-hmm. Can I make a clarification? Best of my recollection, though, at the last meeting, this item was not we didn't get to this item at the last meeting, therefore um, no testimony on the text amendment for six, for the Little House Living application was received. You did hear testimony as the related to the text amendment for nineteen oh six, which is substantially the same text or is the same text. However, it's not part of the same record because you did separate the public hearings.
You're right. You're right. If you, if you would allow me, let me, I have lots of papers too. Okay. Um, I'd be happy to go over it again.
Was in the new.
That, that, um you know, basically, I I I've been involved a long time trying to, uh, help redevelop the properties on the Berlin Turnpike. Um, as long as some of you perhaps, or longer than some of you. And, you know, basically, we retail development isn't going to work. You know, we're down to, um multifamily development. And that's what's being proposed here. And, um I that, I I said that for both of them. Um, that, you know, you, you've actually, um, the commission deserves a lot of credit for both, uh encouraging the expansion of the, um affordable, the need for affordable housing as well as create more opportunities for multifamily development. And I do believe that the, that this, uh, that a little house development i- is, um, will contribute to that. Um, it, you know, if you recall, it was, um, an old motel. And it's, you know, the, like I said, I think that the, um applicant, um, I would have not advised him to take down that old motel and he, but he did because it was a blinding influence as as and created all sorts of problems that we're all aware of. I think it's at the scale consistent with the single family neighborhoods in Berlin. Um, we're only talking about two-story buildings here. Um, you know, the same height and and actually the buildings are in many cases smaller than some of the family homes in the south part of town. Um, the traffic we've heard about here. Uh, there is traffic, there is speeding on the Berlin Turnpike. There's no question about that. This will not really create any more congestion. And you've heard testimony from Mr. Hesketh, uh, our traffic engineer about that. You're really just talking about a couple of cars going in and out. It's not going to impact any local roads. It's, there's no traffic that's going to be impacted on any of the neighborhoods in that part of the town. Uh, it's basically oriented towards the turnpike, so it won't have any real impact in these residential neighborhoods. Um, the access will all be on the southbound side. Again, no congestion. Um, the affordable units, the additional affordable units, um, will help keep the inventory up. And as was wisely pointed out to me, um, I think it was by Commissioner Zigma mentioned it. But that, you know, it would been doing this for so long that the, um, the, the uh, early affordable units had a thirty-year time period and they're actually being taken off the record. So the town really had, this town and every other town has to kind of make, you know, if you want to reach that ten percent threshold. Um, they didn't make it easy. Um, but it it's almost like you have to keep going even if you reach it. Particularly on a town that's been, you know, growing constantly over the past several decades like, uh, like Berlin. The proposals are incorporate, are in, are consistent with your newly adopted twenty twenty-three plan of conservation and development. And I talk about that some of the, uh, aspects of it. Um, and I, and in my, my letter, I, I actually identified what what sections are uh, relevant and how well they are supportive. Um you know, they, they, the whole proposed residential communities there, including this one uh, are consistent with to promote these, uh, plan goals, visions, priorities and strategies. Uh, the communities will approve, will prove to be an asset to the town. And I also believe that the proposed communities will not have any adverse impacts upon the name. I know people are reluctant for this type of thing and and what they don't understand is, uh is, is, uh, it's a little scary sometimes when you talk about apartments, but the fact is, is once they're built uh, that they'll just be an asset to the community. And I think this it it's all part of this grand strategy to strengthen the Berlin Turnpike corridor that you know, we've been kicking around with the best way to do it for years and years. Now, as far as the regulations go, um I, they, they, they are appropriate for what's being done here. Um, I know that, uh, Glenn submitted a, uh, a alternative set of regulations for the other property, not this one particularly, I I believe. Um, but I think that approach, if that's what the commission wishes to do. And again, we had all our caveats down as to what was not acceptable uh, for the, uh um, for you to use the regulations. I I think the, uh, the, the concept of using it as kind of a planned development type of thing, which I've, I've advise other communities to use in different contexts. I think it's, it's a fine idea and it might be sort of the model you ask for on any sort of, uh, um, new development that doesn't quite fit into the parameters of the zoning regulations, but still you might want to um, go along with it because you, there are other reasons that you think it's a good idea. And I think this is one of those the situation where that would be highly appropriate. So again, I apologize for my confusion. I've had a long day too, and like I said, I just went down for a little soda, but, uh I I I apologize again to the commission and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions from the commission? For Mr. Miller? None at this time? Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comment from staff at this point?
I would like to make comments, um, however, if our consultant may have comments as well and yours is though Attorney Smith has. Okay, as well. So I think there's a bit of testimony to be received on this item.
Alrighty, thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission. Glenn Schaller from Planet Metrics. Um, based on the progress that's been made in terms of updating plans and everything else. Um, the zoning regulations, you may recall, we were receiving testimony that they submitted the regulations and the commission wanted changes to, you know, go ahead and make those changes. Um, so you really didn't have anything for review or discussion or comparison purposes. So in my supplemental report dated September fifteenth, um, I kind of summarized the past communications, if you will, on the regulation, um, and provided two possible alternatives for the commission's consideration. Very simply, alternative number one takes the applicant's submitted text strips away the setbacks that concern the commission, the building height and all of the other things. Um, because those regulations would leave the impression for somebody that they could put a forty-five story building five or ten feet off the property line. Um, and that's not being proposed in either of the applications and it's just confusing the matter. So the issue would be that alternative number one, uh, follows essentially the same intent and purposes and permitted uses. Um, identifies the required submittals, which is the material that's been submitted, uh, submitted to the commission for review. Um, and that now, um, provides for a regulatory approach which would identify, uh, the particular address that is being approved, uh, uh, under this, uh, context. And then the, uh, alternative number two is built on your current regulation for planned development district. And, uh, again, it sort of identifies the specific plans, um, the site plans, architectural plans, the housing affordability plan, the deed restrictions and other documents that would be submitted. So I just provide these for your rumination, consideration, discussion, um, because, um there is more than one flavor of possible regulations that the commission could do. And once you've seen other flavors, you can decide which flavor you think works best for, for Berlin.
Thank you very much. Attorney Smith, did you have anything that you'd like to comment on? I mean, I didn't mean to call you out. Um, I just, I didn't know if you wanted to, a chance to address the commission.
Just very quickly, I cannot respond to anything relative to nineteen oh six with the text amendment since you closed the public hearing on that. Uh, Mr. Chalder's, uh, report of, and just for the record, September eighth, uh, fifteenth. Uh, Mr. Cholder's uh report of and just for the record, September eighth fifteen twenty twenty-three. I did have an opportunity to review it and my only comments, as they may apply to sixteen seventy-six, which is what this public hearing involves. Is that there were a few items there that I think we've already. Uh, indicated that we would not be able to agree to and that is the first one appears at page seven. And it's uh number two with the affordability term to an automatic renewal. Uh, that's not a provision if you were to have it, that uh. My client would be willing and able to agree to and it's beyond what's required by. Eight thirty G, maybe a minimum requirement, but that's what's uh required is forty years. And I would respectfully refer refer you to page nine. Uh, number seven. Numbers A and B, uh similarly, we cannot agree to that. And uh the contents for the, oh, and I should be clear as to what that is, since you're probably scrambling to keep up. Having the commission having to approve. A administrator before CO is issued. Is not something we can agree to, we will have somebody who is capable of doing that as indicated in our application. Uh, my client has done that and has been doing that with uh units located in New Britain, actually. The commission number, that's number A, number B. Uh, the ability to require the use of an independent third-party administrator. My client is not at the owner's expense, my client's not willing to agree to that. They will have their own administrator that is administering it and will be providing. That compliance report, annual report to the commission. And the contents uh will be determined. When the uh, when the time comes when the CEOs are going to be issued. As far as determining what the actual costs are going to be for utilities and whatnot, that's. Just speculative at this point, that's why when you do an affordability plan, for example, you do a sample. Of uh what the um projected rents can be, the maximum rents. At the sixteen eighty percent median income, that's going to change. Uh, before at the, you know, that'll change, but between now. In the time that a CEO is going to be issued and at that point. The owner uh would have to demonstrate. Uh, all the various costs that are associated with uh operating. The uh community and that's what uh what they would do, so I just wanted to, I think. I think we have responded previously. Uh, to these concepts and uh they're just not ones that we can agree to. And I just wanted to make sure that I did say that on the record, I again, I think that's already a material that we've submitted. But um. But as Mr. Trolader indicated, as you're using uh what uh the material that is provided to you in the September fifteenth. Twenty twenty-one report uh for your consideration for the text amendment as to sixteen seventy-six, I just wanted to be clear. Uh, other than that, I have nothing further than that, I'm sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I just ask a quick point of clarification because I think he said something new. Just um, so you don't have any comments about the uh propositions put forth in terms of the regulatory? You don't have any comments with regard to that, Chris?
I again, uh, I don't, I don't see actually what's here. If you want to, I I do understand that this draft does refer to nineteen oh six, but if you wanted to. Have a text amendment that applies to. This individual property sixteen seventy-six. Uh, and with requirements that uh do not include the requirements that I just went through. And whereby the doesn't take the site development plan out of out of compliance, we would have no objection to that.
And then the other, just don't let go of the microphone. The other quick question that I had is you commented about the content of the reports that. The commission would receive regarding compliance with the affordability plan. That that uh you made the comment that that'll be determined at the time. That the certificates of occupancy are issued, so you're objecting to that content being in the affordability plan about what? The content of those reports would be to the commission on an annual basis?
Well, I I do think that I think the schedules, I don't want to speak for Mr. Miller, I think the schedules to his. Uh, affordability plan uh do does have quite a bit of material that is to be generated and can be utilized and provided. Uh, Mr. Miller, if you're still there, perhaps, I know we had discussed this, perhaps you can respond directly to that question.
Yeah, um. I'm still here, yeah, they um. With the numbers that you put in those in the plan are um examples. And they're based on the information available at that time. So there's a, there's a whole slew of different factors in there. There's um based on the median incomes, whether it's statewide or regional. And they change usually go up every year. There's um the uh assumption of what are the utility costs? For each of the units. And that's um based on uh. Numbers produced by the department, Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development and adopted by. The State Department of Housing. And as you might understand. Those do go up um or or change annually as well.
Excuse me, Brian, Brian, I'm sorry, I I think I think neither, I I'm, I think I misinterpreted the question from attorney, town attorney Capola.
Yeah, that wasn't what I was talking, I understand that the calculations will change um based upon those numbers, but uh. Mr. Miller, we were just talking about the annual reports that get submitted. To the commission with regard to compliance with the affordability plan, that's what the content of those.
It it shouldn't be that complicated a report, I mean, and and it's been done. Year for years throughout the state without any issues. And it would be submitted to. The town and they would identify those affordable units. And whatever information that was, it yeah. That was part of their application, including um. You know, their income tax uh. And and whatever else they need, similar to kind of a credit analysis, but from a different perspective. So it hasn't been a problem. We haven't found it to be a problem anywhere that I've talked to anybody about. This submitted usually to the the town, it could be the planning office. And the planning office could review it or you could ask the finance department to take a look at it. But it 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 and it's it's and it has been made available. And certainly if there's confusion. On the part of or some discrepancies. On the part of those reports. Then it's very, there's nothing to stop. The planner saying, hey, you know, I don't think this is right, could you give me some more information or you left this down? And I don't, I don't see where that has to be. Formalized in the report, I mean, that's just part of the overall operation of it. And again, this, this is an example of what you do here. The that, you know, the 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 person in charge of it. Uh, there's certainly nothing that would stop the planning department from asking. The person in charge of it to provide, you know, whatever information that particular person needs thinks is is needed. It it's there already, you you know, you could ask for whatever information you want to ask for. As long as it's reasonable and related to the situation. So I I don't, I think, I don't think we want to get too complex on how you do everything in the. That of all the reports, it's not what the A thirty G is asking for. Because they figured out, they, you know, the assumption was everybody will figure out how to do it. And we've been figuring out how to do A thirty G for. Years now and I think we're finally getting it. So um, that's already in the, as far as appointing somebody. We used to, if you recall that we used to ask the town to do it. Because the town volunteered at that time and then in nineteen ninety-six or whatever it was. And I guess everybody was stuck for for a while. And I talked to the social services director, he was very happy to get rid of it, so. I guess that's my my response is I don't think any of that is necessary. I hope I've answered your question this time.
No, no, you did, I just, I I know that uh one of the things that I've dealt with in this area in particular is concern expressed from commissions about them. I'll I'll just, for example, the marketing of the units. They've wanted information with regard to uh the marketing so that they. Can ensure that the units are being marketed properly, so you're saying, you know, that. You wouldn't have obviously any objection to the the town asking for that information. That's something that would be available and could be shared. And and that was kind of along the lines of why ask the question, I just, I I've not. I've not really heard uh. That from from you folks before that, you know, in terms of the expectations as far as the content of the. Report not being included in uh the affordability plan, I mean, that's something that. I know in some of the plans that I've seen, it it is included and sometimes it's revised based upon. Particular concerns of the commission and it it does typically not. Turn out to be a big deal because they're not asking for anything unreasonable, they're asking for obvious things to show compliance. With with the statute, so um and and I think Attorney Smith is kind of nodding as well, so. Yeah, so I think it's a non-issue, I just, he made the comment and I wanted to ask so that we have it on the record that we kind of all understood each other.
Thank you for asking, this is the way I've always looked at it, if you're not complying with it, it's a it's a zoning violation. Because it is.
We don't want to get to that point though, Mr. Miller.
Well, we don't, we never do. We never do.
Standing ahead.
We never do, but even when it's not in in a zoning violation. The uh zoning office does have the uh requirement to ask for information about it. So it's a same, to me, it's analogous, it's not exactly the same, you're correct. But it is analogous that that the, you know, as an enforcement agency, you have the right to ask for information. As long as it's reasonable and and and. And and appropriate for the situation. But again, I I think we agree, it's not, it's it's really not a problem either way and. You know, I suppose if there was some language in there that they, you know, come that the town could ask for whatever information. To assure conformance, I can't see where that would be a problem.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Mr. Chandler.
Uh, Mr. Uh, Chalder for the record. This couple of things I just have to respond to, I I think it's important for the commission. To recognize there's really three parts to an application like an A thirty G and I think they need to be bifurcated. So let's sort of summarize that one part of the application is in fact the physical plans that we're reviewing, architecture, site plans, all of the other stuff. The second part, I'm just going to call it, is the regulation which Attorney Smith has testified. May or may not, it has to be submitted, but you you know, maybe you don't have to do it, maybe you could just approve the plan, et cetera, so it's this ephemeral thing. And then the other thing is the operating instructions for this development and that's the affordability plan. If the regulation is optional, the affordability plan is not part of the regulation, you'll notice. In the regulation I put, the options I put before you, there's nothing about the affordability plan. So the regulation doesn't in any way conflict with Ms. Attorney Smith's. Comments about, well, you can't do this and you can't do that and you can't do the other, the issue is, it's not in the regs. Right, so the regs, if you want to do them. Clearly are a way to enable the development. But the issues of the affordability plan are integral to the site plan itself, it's a third element, not part of the regulation, so I think it's important. In your decision-making deliberative process to to recognize that. And uh if any of the issues that. Attorney Smith brought up were third rails, we haven't touched any third rails in that regulation. The second thing is that uh my esteemed colleague Brian. Uh, Miller has commented on that. We've been doing these for a lot of years, hasn't been a problem. And I I beg to differ. There's situations around the state where affordability plans have not been followed. Not been administered correctly and the end result is affordable units get lost. Because the procedures aren't spelled out. And this isn't right, it's not fair. All of the work that we're going through with regard to affordable units under the state law. Could vaporize if the affordability plan isn't followed. I spent quite a bit of time talking with the State Department of Housing. They recommend that the administrator be qualified, capable. Experienced and durable. Came across a situation in another Connecticut municipality. Where the builder developer's receptionist was the administrator. No experience. So you can imagine what happened with that affordability plan. The Department of Housing has recommended to me that the commission retain the right to review and approve the administrator. I don't doubt that Mr. Snow with all of his real estate experience and professionals available to him. May have somebody on his staff whose experience is doing this. In some other towns, the housing authorities have stepped up and say, we do this all the time, we'll do it, we'll qualify people and verify the rental rates. But if we have a situation in ten or twenty years. We're back to a receptionist administering the plan, those units may disappear. And Berlin will fall further away from its goal of achieving the units. The second thing I think it's really important here is that. We just heard testimony that said, well, you know, if you're not getting the information, why don't you just ask for it? Really don't think we can have a situation where. Moreeens. Future position, somebody else is in the position and they they want to ask for different information or anything else like that. So I think somewhere along the way, the commission has to, as pointed out in the Affordable Housing Plan. Look at standard procedures and a standard affordability plan. We can't have different plans with different types of procedures. And I guess where I really started to get agitated. Was the concept, well, hey, you know, if we make a mistake, it's a zoning violation. The zoning violation tools are 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 just woefully bad in the state of Connecticut. Cease and des- slap on the rest. Once somebody is. Sold or rented an affordable unit. Or violated the affordability plan, putting the genie back in the bottle is really hard. So we can't mess this up and say, oh, zoning violation. Or maybe we have an ordinance and we're going to have, it's a hundred dollars a day. Maybe we'll get some teeth into it that way. But a zoning violation is not an effective way to do this, you need to have good procedures upfront. And that's actually why my comments in September, not September, excuse me, uh, June. On the affordability plan were as lengthy as they were. And as I've already stated, Brian's done a great job, Brian Miller. In terms of addressing many of those comments, but I still think there's work that needs to be done there. It may or may not happen as part of this application, but I would urge the town of Berlin to. Figure out how to get standard procedures in place. For these issues. So that the units don't disappear. We're going to work this hard to get them, let's figure out a way to keep them so they really meet the housing needs. There's higher density here than what would normally be permitted under the commission zoning regulations. The state has set up this alternate route, if you will. But it comes with conditions. And the condition is you have to provide. Third, minimum thirty percent of the units is affordable. For a minimum of forty years. Well, then let's have good rules in place for what that should be. And if uh affordability plan doesn't meet the the town's goals and objectives. Let's say what our affordability plan should be. So, for your consideration.
May I respond to that?
I'm sure you can, Mr. Miller.
I'm like, again, I don't disagree with a lot of what Glenn just said. But you know, it first of all, the state has standards for these affordability plans, the procedures are not part of those standards. If the commission of Berlin or any other town. Wishes to adopt um some sort of process. By all means, go ahead and do it. It it doesn't have to be in each individual plan. If you want to, if you want to start those processes, go ahead. Try them out. And also the State Department of Housing, again, this has been going on for thirty years. My question, they have all sorts of regulations. If they had thought it was such an important thing, they would have put it in in their uh agency requirements, so. Yeah, if you want to do that, fine, and and I'm sure Glenn has something that he could. Offer and you want to do it for all of them, this is our procedures, well, that's fine, but. Uh, my only s- statement is that it's not required in the plan, we could put all sorts of. Things in the plan because people think it's a good idea. But that's really not the purpose of the plan, you want, you want to have standards, you want to have. You want our procedures, by all means, do it, it just doesn't need to be in the plan.
Okay. Commission. Questions? And yes, Maureen.
So I have a few things. I want to, I think, support Mr. Chalder's comments with um, regard to if it, if designations and the information is in the plan and, and what needs to be provided is laid out, then the staff, town staff, the town resources don't have to chase the information. Um, it's one thing, somebody gives us a, oh, we gave you a report. Well, then we're reading the report. Report's not good. It doesn't have the right information. If it's laid out as to what needs to be provided, we can always, as, as stated, if we need additional information, well, that might be additional information, but to have that basic information instead of having a lot of back and forth, it, it's a waste of time. Chasing information is a waste of time.
Yes.
And enforcement shouldn't be the go-to because what happens then? A rented unit? You have somebody actually living somewhere. They then have to be evicted because they're not in the unit properly and we need to get the right balance or whatever. Um, so I find that to be an, an issue. And that's as far as administrating on offense. Um, as well as staff changes, as was discussed, um, our, the reference social services director that we've had in town for many, many, many years. Uh, they retired. It's, you know, there's been a change of having to work on the affordability of units. Um, and then in, on a related topic, um, I also feel that I don't think it's been said in this particular conversation, but the designation of the units, I didn't want to get lost in the conversation or in other conversation. But designating specific units within the complex also provides that ability to not have to chase units, recalculate with every single tenant change. Oh, well, did a unit change? Is that an affordable unit? Is that not an affordable unit? You know, right off the bat. And at this time, I am currently actually reviewing another plan where the units are designated. They were shown to me by the developer. They're on the plan. They're the designated units. And we then have the known mix of unit type, unit style, whether they have handicap units, number of bedrooms, and that mix never changes because you know, and where they are in the complex, you know, that they're spread out in a reasonable manner, acceptable to the commission. So I just wanted to make each of those points. Let me see who is not muted. Somebody's not muted. I think it's you, Brian. Oh, no, could you mute yourself? I'm trying. Let me try to get there. There we go. Okay. I have now muted him. Um, in addition, I've made some preliminary staff summary to try to pull things together for the commission as to what you've heard. Obviously, there's new testimony, new things have come in this week. And there's a few details in this draft summary that I, but I will, I would like to distribute it to you so that you have it. Um, and it's part of the record. Um, little details, um, like unit counts and things, um, that are in your record already. They're just not quantified in the report. Um, and in my summary, I also referred, made reference, as has been made reference to throughout the Affordable Housing Plan twenty twenty-two, on a Berlin Affordable Housing Plan that was adopted, the Plan of Conservation and Development, and the, um, Berlin zoning regulations. So just so that you see where things are tied into, I've, I've made some references to different sections and we did get copied the Affordable Housing Plan for you once again, so that in case somebody can't immediately find it, you can find them again. More paper, because I know you're all going to hurt your backs carrying the things in and out of the meeting. Um, so that's what I have right now.
Trandra wants to address us again. Yes.
I, I just wanted to point out for the commission, the matter that's open tonight in your hearing right now is the regulation. We have migrated into the Affordable Housing Plan, which isn't part of the regulation. Okay, so just to make clear in the record here that we're adding these issues, which are more appropriately related to the discussion of the site plan, the housing affordability plan, rather than the regulation. So, it's probably hard given the way the conversations unfolded here, but uh, I think if the commission can try to keep the regs separate from the other items, that would, uh, help in your decision-making.
Yep. Thank you for that. I don't have enough to read. Okay. Right. Okay.
Quick question.
Uh, yes.
If, if we did present or gather something that was a standardized report form, where would that take place? Where's that best fit within the town of Berlin?
So I'm not quite sure that I understand your, your question. Are, are you asking again? And, and really the affordability plan? Yeah, there's more of a site plan issue than, than a text amendment issue. You asking about developing the form affordability plan, because that's something, and, and we also do have a deed restriction that was submitted to by Attorney Smith today. So it would, you know, we talked about in your your process of doing your reg review, um, the standardization of these forms, right? So when somebody comes in with an affordable housing application, we're sort of helping them along by having, you know, this is the form that we've developed. This is what we look for in terms of layout and content and so forth. Um, you know, it, it just benefits the whole process. And I know we've talked about, about doing that. So having more forms just overall, but in particular in this realm. So we're not getting things that look different and all the time, right? And constantly revising.
Um, right. So like we had conversation about administratively, we wanted to report annually. Then if there was a standard report that we could ask that would be consistent, we could compare year to year that things seem to be the same. Seems like something we need to put into place. I didn't know where it was best inserted in our process either.
Well, we do have two that look different right now.
Okay.
And, and, you know, it's something that we've already started working on, and I don't see why we can't, because again, in terms of content, we all really do know what it should be. And I don't think there's disagreement about that, you know, with these applicants that are involved. So, so I think, you know, except of course, there's a couple of things that Attorney Smith indicated, you know, that they don't agree with. Um, so, you know, the rest of it though, we can, we can develop it if that's the desire of the commission. You know, I don't see why we, we can't have that done for you. Very, very.
Okay. All right. And this, and this is about the, um, all right, this is the text amendment. So is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission regarding this application? Um, okay. All right, we have somebody coming on down.
Linda Hall Strand, forty-eight Holly Court. Um, this is from the package that we gave you a couple of weeks ago. Just wanted to read it. Um, I still do not understand why the twenty twenty-three sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike site application is advancing under a Connecticut State Statute eight thirty G appeal. This is a new application with major differences from the twenty twenty-two denied application being appealed in Superior Court. The differences are shrinking setbacks to fifteen feet on, on the north, south, and west boundaries, utilizing a different manufacturer for the infiltration system with three separate locations, different unit models. The Connecticut Office of Legislative Research asked the question.
Okay, I, this, we're still in the text amendment thing.
I'm talking about.
Okay. So you're addressing like the site, the site lines or whatever of the proposed text.
Why, why is it an eight thirty G?
Well, the.
Why is it coming under that?
Okay, but the, but the text amendment is separate from the eight thirty. Okay, that belongs to the site plan. The text amendment is just the body of the regulation. So the comments, the comments regarding setbacks or whatever are valid. But we can't fold in the eight thirty G because the text amendment seems, needs to stand on its own without it. So, you know.
Both, both the text, text amendment and the site plan application are applications that have been submitted pursuant to the statute to eight thirty G. They're both considered to be affordable housing applications. They are.
Okay, so.
Um, but, um, I don't.
I think I got a little confused then.
Again, I, I think, again, the, the, the question that you raised, um, is the concern that there's a pending appeal on, on a prior denial of a non-eight thirty G application. And now they've come in and, and we've received, um, th- these two applications for, for, again, text amendment and a site plan with regard to this property, um, that is the subject of an appeal. Um, so the, in terms of there's a body of case law and Attorney Smith could speak to this as well, but in terms of the prior application rule, I mean, these, these are not, these applications are not similar to the prior application. Um, so in terms of receiving the application, um, they, they could not make that finding that, that, you know, they were similar um, in terms of the relief sought and so on and so forth. And there's a whole, you know, I could get into a lot of legal, please, I could pull up a case and read, you know, there's one particular case and that I'm thinking of that would maybe provide a little bit more guidance, but the bottom line is, is that they could not not receive these applications based upon the fact that there's a pending administrative appeal on the denial of the prior application. Is that what you're, does that sort of answer your concern? It just, it just is what it is. I mean, as far as the what is legally required, they could not not receive based upon the fact that there's a pending appeal on an application that is dissimilar to what they've submitted here.
I un, I understand that. What he keeps talking about that this is, comes under an eight thirty G appeal. Okay, all I'm trying to say is the proceed, the, the Connecticut Office of Legislative Research, okay, says the, the procedure requires municipal planning and zoning agencies to defend their decisions to reject affordable housing development applications. Where is the rejection on this twenty twenty-three Berlin Turnpike site plan application? To date, it has not been denied. The public hearing has not been closed. The set aside application should fall under section eleven of the Berlin zoning regulations. The applicant should propose a new text amendment as opposed to attempting to, what I think is intimidating the commission with an erroneous and absurd eight thirty G appeal. And that comes from the Legislative Research, the office. So that's all I wanted to say. I still don't, I mean, we are talking about something different, but they're bringing in an appeal, keeps talking about an appeal when this hasn't been denied or, you know, rejected. So anyways, that's in your packet. All I wanted to say regarding that.
So so I think it's part of the confusion and, and, and you all have read the statute, right? And it is referred as, you know, the, the procedure um, that is in eight thirty G G is referred to as the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure. Um, and I think that that's maybe where some of the confusion lies. So.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the public? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Sherri Rice, thirty-eight Holly Court. Thank the commission for once again, allowing me to speak. Um, I just wanted to, I know Mr. Miller in his presentation had said that, um, they felt this project fell in line with the vision, um, that the town has for it, but I respectively wanted to say that this commission spent a long time working on something that they felt was the vision for this property and, and this is not it. Um, and again, I just wanted to address briefly again, just the setbacks, um, how it, how it impacts our neighborhood. He, he said in his statement that he didn't feel like it would impact the residents, but we're talking about a five-foot setback on our street that drops ten feet and a potentially forty-five-foot building. So we're talking about a fifth, potentially a fifty-five-foot structure at the end of a cul-de-sac, um, in our neighborhood. And I think that has a significant impact on the neighborhood and the residents around it. Um, so I would, I would just ask that, um, that that be considered in the approval or the denial of the text amendment. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? Commission. Questions? Diane, I see you're putting your glasses on, so.
Got to be prepared.
I know when she puts her glasses on, she's going to say something. And the rest of us will listen. Do you want to say anything?
I think I'll make a motion to close this public hearing.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Georgey. We have a second by Mr. Zigma for the discussion on this. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, some moved. All righty. Onto page two of three. We're only going to ten thirty. I know you put your glasses on. All right, public hearing continuing. This is the application site plan approval to permit a twenty-unit multifamily residential unity, community, excuse me, on real property known as seven, as sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike, map twenty-two dash one, block one fourteen, lot ten. This is also being continued. Um, now this is site plan, site plan.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the commission, professional staff, town attorney Capola. For the record, my name is Chris Smith. And I appear before you this evening on behalf of the owner applicant. Uh, we do have, uh, this evening, uh, Mr. Zach Giorgino from Giuliano Associates, as well as Scott Hescott. Uh, Scott, uh, and, and Mr. Georgina will be, Georgina will be addressing, uh, the comments that are, were provided to the commission uh, from Giuliano Associates dated August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. And Mr. Hescott will be responding or providing you with a summary of his comments. And it's right behind this one. Uh, in a report supplemental report that was, uh, dated and submitted to the commission. It's dated August thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. And this, uh, these are the comments in response to, uh, comments from the commission, questions from the commission, and comments and questions from, uh, the citizens. So with permission of the chair, I'll turn it over to Mr. Georgina.
Okay.
Yeah. Good volume. Awesome. Hi, my name is Zach Georgina. Uh, I'm with Giuliano Associates, uh, out of Wallingford, Connecticut, four oh five Main Street. I just want to run through the, uh, written response provided, um, dated August twenty-fifth from our office, uh, in response to the plan and metrics report dated June thirtieth. The planning and zoning, uh, department staff comments dated July eighteenth. The office of the building inspector letter dated August seventeenth. Those letters right there. Um, so if we start with plan and metrics on page ten.
Right, hang on.
Yep, not. Yep, not a problem.
Now we got to get to this stuff. I was organized.
Happens to the best of us.
Well, oh yeah. Did you find yours? Where are you?
Okay, I'm currently referring to two documents. My documents uh in response to several different documents was dated August 25th from Giuliano Associates. Um, the first section we're going to be going over is in response to Planted Metrics, June 30th document.
I am. I'm looking for the right document. Yeah, please, let's share because I don't want to hold people. That's the one. Okay.
All right, uh, so for the Planted Metrics document, the um comments that pertain to my portion of the presentation start on page 10 of Planted Metrics, uh just to make your life easier for turn to the correct page. So um, start out with comment number two. It is in regard to landscaping. Uh, the applicant does understand that there's a risk to the health of the existing perimeter vegetation. However, based on uh our provided planting plans, there's a clear intent to replace trees that we know are going to be compromised or damaged uh currently in the plan. And there's a clear intent to maintain this buffer vegetation. Additionally, there's a uh inquiry from Planted Metrics about asking if the Commission is interested in uh securing a arborist to confirm the survivability. We are open to that if the Commission feels it's necessary. Um, but as stated, our planting plan does uh outline that we're looking at maintaining the survivability of these plants. Obviously, we want the screening and buffering. Uh, as such, the request for Planted Metrics for an alternative planting plan uh from our office seems superfluous uh as nothing more than additional work with not a real benefit to the applicant or the town as there's a stated plan and a planting plan already in place to maintain and enhance it via the existing screening plantings. Uh, next section uh was a comment on parking for Planted Metrics, item number three. Um, the town's regulations, uh section nine B5AI and B5A2 uh require quite literally, your regulations require two parking spaces per dwelling unit. Um, our plan is presented meets that requirement. Uh, in addition, the circular traffic pattern results in one-way traffic. Um, the proposed travel lane is to be 24 foot in width. Uh, design eas- this design easily accommodates street parking along the interior edge of the drive without interfering with circular uh circulation of emergency vehicles. Um, the additional available street parking will allow visitors as uh to park as needed. Uh, no parking signs have been included along the e- exterior edge of the traffic loop. Uh, they are designated with the number four uh and correspond to a DOT sign detail also included on the planning page. Uh, waste management uh is to be handled via the utilization of individual barrels for each unit to include one refuse and one recycling. Trash will be collected from these barrels on a regularly scheduled basis. Um, number six was in regards to uh parking for the handicapped. Um, it is our understanding that unit 14 will be accessible, meaning that it will conform to the state regulations. Regarding the site plan, unit 14 uh is part of one of the duplexes, which is um features a shared drive access, which is 27 feet in width. This width provides more than enough space for a 16-foot-wide ADA van space and a standard nine-foot wide parking space. Residential parking of this style does not typically mark the pavement um of these spaces uh to designate an accessible unit. Uh, but it does accommodate it in terms of width. Uh, the garage slabs were requested to be added. Those have been added as have finished floor elevations been included. Um, garage slab elevations are dependent on site grading conditions with a maximum driveway slope of 5%. A few of them are a little bit less, but none of them more than five. Um, this 5% just uh additional information that I know has been asked uh previously. Um, that is less than the maximum 6% uh paved apron requirement by the town and much less than the 10% drive maximum required by the town. So nice and gentle drive up to each unit. Um, the number eight is we're getting into storm drainage inquiries. Uh, the provide, the provided report was prepared um and addressed the proposed stormwater system, which is designed in in accordance to the 2004 Connecticut State Water Quality Manual. This report has been reviewed by Christopher Giuliano, P E L S, uh and determined to be complying with said manual as there's a que- a question as to uh it being reviewed. Um, 8D uh requests uh finer grading, which was added to the front drive access on uh the site utility plan. Um, we can go into that a little more detailed, but the request was to uh more well define the gutter flow to prevent water from the Berlin Turnpike entering into the uh the site, and that was provided. Uh, and 8E, a stormwater maintenance plan was provided to the town. Uh, Mr. Trandler has requested a maintenance plan and management plan. That was provided uh as well as the uh manufacturer's specific maintenance manual for the proposed uh subterranean infiltration units. And that concludes the Planted Metrics review. We're now going to move on to the staff department document or comments dated July 17th. You guys want to grab that or?
Yeah.
I know I'm going fast, I'm just trying to to make this as painless as possible.
No, it's okay. Well, I'm sure it's in here.
Uh, so the next set of comments is in regards to the Planning and Zoning Department Staff Comments dated July 17th and updated July 18th. Uh, the document I had was dated July 17th and updated July 18th.
Sorry, that's the town engineer's comments? Or the staff?
That is this, that is this, the staff comment uh sheet.
Cut staff comments.
Correct.
Um, so there's the routing sheet with the staff comments on it that and compiles.
I believe it was two-page. Uh, I'm going off of memory here. I Okay. If it's acceptable, like the the staff comments were not particularly extensive. I can quickly summarize what it was and give the response. Okay. Um, so to that end, uh, there was a comment from the Fire Marshal uh essentially addressing the uh the need for fire lanes. Uh, the comment was along the lines of um them not seeing a problem with uh fire access, but most likely wanting to designate areas after construction to be paint marked, uh no fire, um essentially no parking fire lane. Uh, the applicant understands that while fire lanes may be required and their location determined in the field, it's our belief that a parking ban on one side of the driveway addresses this matter. So just to clarify that, we are open to it, but the situation shouldn't warrant it in our in our opinion. Inland Wetlands, uh, there was a comment that there was still a pending application. This is indeed factual, uh, application uh 23-05 is still pending. Uh, although I believe the public comment has been closed, that is still awaiting final deliberation. Uh, the Berlin Water Control had a series of comments asking uh for callouts. As such, we added uh a call out uh to the proposed water mains to be eight-inch ductile iron. Um, the a call out for the proposed hydrants to be Mueller five-and-a-quarter inch units. Uh, proposed call to the sewer main has been amended to read eight-inch SDR 35 PVC. Uh, call out was added to the proposed water laterals, all to be one-inch copper. Uh, water gate shut offs were added for each individual dwelling unit's proposed service lateral. Uh, the proposed sewer laterals were resized to six inches. Uh, and a call out has been added to the existing six-inch sewer service in Holly Court. Um, or tying into the Holly Court manhole, uh stating it is to be replaced with an eight-inch SDR 35 PVC main. Um, additionally, there was a inland wetlands comments uh specifically saying uh and to address that, a note was added to sheet two of the drawing set uh placing responsibility for stormwater maintenance upon the property owner uh and referencing the maintenance plan that was submitted with this application.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Maureen, can you pull this document up since none of us seem to be able to find it?
I am looking for it.
That that way we can at least follow along.
I think that's why he said he would read the comments. That he can read what they are to then let you know. I'm looking for it, however.
I sent the new copies in that. I sent the visual copies on you. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, no, I I I've seen. They have this question, staff comment document that they're looking for. Yeah, yeah. Just to to clarify, you guys do indeed have my letter, correct? The issue is locating the staff comment letter? Okay.
Yeah, that I was looking for the staff comment letter. I had yours on the screen a moment ago. Have to find it again.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Millard, was it the Giuliano letter you were asking to have him pull up? Or the, I was looking for the department comments.
I think I think I have found it.
Yep, that's the one.
Sorry, with so many meetings, we have them filed in different under the different meeting dates. Had to locate when it was distributed.
Got it.
Oh. So here, as you can see on the screen, I've pulled it up. The Fire Marshal's comment is the first comment and he did re- um thus provided response um with regard to that. Wetlands comment, and now you're to the Berlin Water Control comments.
Correct.
Correct.
And essentially, it's a line for line. Every one of those comments they provided, we added the uh the call outs to the drawing as requested.
Oops, sorry. The pages go down too far.
Uh, and then uh lastly, the conservation commission. Uh, you guys can read that right there, but they request the owner responsible for ongoing maintenance of the stormwater. And we did add a detail or a note to these um utility plan addressing that directly uh and referencing our submitted stormwater maintenance plans. So that's that's the uh the bulk of the comments there, um addressing these matters. I know we did also receive an additional um just the other day uh set of comments, the September 15th from Planted Metrics. Um, that bulkly covers the same conversation again with uh his his stated comments is if the Commission is concerned with the loss of existing vegetation and our lack of buffering, a specific proposal should be submitted by the applicant to address these comments. Um, and again, we we responded to that with by essentially stating our plan is clearly stating the intent to maintain this buffer. And we're not sure why we would need an additional plan, but if the Commission wants it, we can pursue that matter. Um. The uh parking emergency access uh Planted Metrics comment is the applicant has responded that vehicles may park on the inside of the island, but no information has been submitted to show where these spaces would be, where there's adequate maneuvering room for an emergency vehicle. Their response indicated that no parking signs would be placed around the outside of the access strip, but it's not clearly spelled out in the plans. On sheet two of the plans, the location of these signs is clearly spelled out and denoted. Um, there is a DOT standard table detail with callouts to where these signs are located on our submitted plans. Uh, additionally, um, I the Commission, no one has actually asked for a attorney raise plan, but I do have one if the Commission would like to actually see it. We do run these internally to make sure. Um, but essentially, we're looking at a one-way lane that has no less than a 34-foot internal radius and a 44-foot external radius. That's more than enough to allow for uh any fire truck, any standard fire truck to maneuver around the site with full parking cars on the interior. Um, additionally, most streets that I drive on that offer street parking don't have parking spaces denoted or painted. Um, this option is more or less left open with a few areas where uh parking is not to be permitted hatched out uh to allow the use of the street, just like any residential street would be in terms of the interior parking. Um, and then uh lastly, there was a uh comment for Planted Metric uh defers to the town engineer and others regards to the adequacy of the stormwater maintenance plan. Um, and without comments, that's a, that's hard to actually respond to. That's just a request to the Commission.
I'd like to make a clarification on the um staff comments. So on those staff comments, he references, um, you'll see from the July 17th, you had the town engineer and it had noted no comment peer review. He rescinded that realizing that he had gotten the application forms, actually, the review sheets mixed up. And that was the comment that was on his 1906 review as opposed to the 1676 review. He had, he then supplied comments. Um, I know the most recent were updated or were provided on September 7th, 2023. Those have been distributed there actually, I think in your packets today. We got um further updated comments as of last night. So dated September 20th. I thought those were the ones copied, but the seventh was the one copied into the packet. So those will be distributed to you as well. They've all been forwarded to the applicant.
My office has not received any actual engineering comments to date.
So that would be, I mean, uh, all our correspondence goes to um Attorney Smith and I believe to Pat Snow. I will make sure that they have all of the. I will make sure that they have all of the town engineer's comments.
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes responding to the existing comments of there are questions, comments from the commission.
Okay, Ms. Daly.
Earlier in your presentation, you talked about the handicap parking. And you said that it is provided for by the width, but not won't be indicated. It won't have handicap parking or will it? Symbols or signs are painting.
So typically ADA compliant spaces are for publicly accessible spaces as these are unit assigned spaces. You don't typically see a home that is handicap accessible marking a handicap sign and marking on their driveway. That's just not a standard practice for individual residents. As the unit itself is designated to be handicapped, that space and available size is allotted to them as their driveway right.
And the other thought I had was you said that you already allow the two parking places per unit. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, because I had thought all along it was less than that. So thank you. That was good to hear.
Just to clarify, this, we do allow the two. There's a garage space and a driveway space allotted for each unit, and that does meet the the requirements of the two provided spaces.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to know, are there any considerations for electric vehicles?
Much like most residential, private ownership of electric vehicle would fall on an owner. There are literally one-twenty in plug in volt or plug in systems. I know personally, a buddy of mine who has a Tesla plugs in his garage every night through a one-twenty, and that suffices to charge.
So that mean is being considered.
That situations like that are are always considered.
Considering where our country is going and the president wants to have.
I I can't speak for the architectural themselves, but I can make sure that that gets relayed to the architects.
Chris Smith, for the record, we can follow up with Mr. Snow on that. I don't know the answer to that, and I don't think that Zach does either. And with the town engineer's comments, I will look for those. I think I don't know if those were received previously or we're talking about recent.
So actually, I I again misremembered the comments I got yesterday for him were on a different application. These were the September seventh comments, and I don't know how or why they weren't distributed or if they were, well, I have the email that says they were, but that doesn't matter. I'm sending it to all of you now.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Everybody's getting them.
I wanted to make sure, and we'll we'll look into the EV question.
Anyone else? Ms. Georgey?
Just a comment with respect to the preservation of the trees and the offer to get a letter from a qualified arborist. There are different levels of certification with respect to making those types of determinations. And if the commission makes the decision to make a request in that regard, the letter should come from a certified consulting arborist.
Okay. Any other commissioners with questions?
Yeah, I guess just to kind of follow up on Commissioner George's statement. Once this is developed, as I'm looking at this site plan, you're going to be hard pressed to maintain that buffer with the how close the buffer is to the homes. You're not going to be able to get equipment in there to maintain or replace what looks to be a lot of the screening on the property.
With the fact from the back of the buildings is fifteen feet. Standard arbor body has essentially a ten-foot diameter spread. They're currently planted along the property line that should allow maintenance along the backside with a five-foot corridor.
I mean, as somebody who, you know, is in that line of work, five feet is difficult. So.
Understood.
Chris Smith, for the record, I just wanted to respond. I did hear from Mr. Snow, who unfortunately is out of town and is, but he is attending remotely. Mr. Snow indicates that each house is set up with a dedicated circus circuit, excuse me, in the garage for EV for each owner. So that can certainly be a condition of approval to ensure that that occurs if you would like.
Anyone else with any burning questions at this time or comments? Tim?
Yeah, I'm looking at the plans. First of all, just brought up fifteen foot property lines in the in the rear. That is way too close in a way that not what was proposed or anything else. It's a it's a problem with the neighbors being that close. And you know, this this plan is all all the footage is spaces and everything else of fifteen point five over here, fifteen point something whatever over here, fifteen feet off the borders is not viable product. You know, and I don't know why they would have to be that way. Especially to to you know, like I said before, our single-family residential homes and and a lot of these are single-family, as I said, homes require thirty, thirty-five feet of of usable land behind them. These do not apply to that or all these single-family homes on this development. So I think that the we should look into that. There is no usable space for the occupants of the units. For the grill out back, whatever, you know, and it's not a usable space at all, the way it's designed.
I I have a question for staff if I can. Is this not the same application that's in a wetlands? That we were requesting the consultant for?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. That's nineteen nineteen oh six.
That's nineteen oh six.
Nineteen oh six. That you're talking about the two different site plans that you had the discussion about last night?
Yeah, well, no, I'm just talking about earlier in the agenda.
He said wetland not approval on this one yet either.
No, they closed the public hearing last Tuesday, but
But they haven't approved anything.
They didn't deliberate on it.
They didn't deliberate. Okay, so.
And we're talking about a plan without wetland approvals.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, which is fine. We can take.
Our normal stance.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with really. I mean, we can take testimony, obviously, because we are we're still in the public hearing. So I mean, if there's anyone who want to bring something forth or if you have any burning questions. But I just want to point out that we're still basically wetlands hasn't approved it. So we're in limbo here again. All right. Does everyone, everyone have any questions on that? All right, so I mean, I'm I mean, just for the the sake of time, I'm just trying, because I know that there's some other items on the agenda. And I mean, I know we can continue discussion, but it just occurred to me that.
Well, as I indicated before, there is nothing prohibiting you from going forward.
Yeah.
With this matter, the hearing has to be closed when the hearing has to be closed. And and unfortunately, if you want to take in information now to accommodate your schedule due to the delays at the initial processing of both of these matters and this matter, because that's what we're talking about. Then we're getting our information in within the deadline, the current statute, the current deadline that we're talking about. I'm not sure where we are with that.
And what what when do we have to close this public hearing?
This is this one.
And I do have our traffic engineer to provide you with his summary. And and then we're we're done responding to any of the comments.
Yeah.
Site plan application. So if you would like to hear from our traffic, he he submitted his report already. I don't have it right here with me, but it was at the end of August before the last meeting. We were ready to go. The last meeting, we ran into your curfew, I think.
Yeah.
Knowing Mr. Hesketh, he could probably provide a summary very quickly of that if you, but it is in the record. Again, he can provide that, and then we don't have to do that at the next meeting.
Okay, so he says you needs two minutes? Three minutes. And 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 Maureen, we don't have to close this public hearing tonight.
There are thirty-nine extension days that the applicant would have to agree to use.
All right, mean effective today, we would have to get.
From today, there are today. So you're at you're using extension time currently to have them it open today. And if you continue it beyond today, there are thirty-nine extension days available to use.
Well, well.
Our fault that we started in.
I don't even I don't even want to go there.
The applicant has to be proceeding with their application yet. Four or five months later. Because wetland still has made far as I'm considering, the application is not proper right now because they didn't follow the process that we have.
I I.
He cannot blow cars
No, I I understand what you're I understand what you're saying. I think just for the because we have the traffic gentleman here. And he's only saying he has a quick report or update to provide us. I don't think there's any problem with taking that in, and then we can just move on. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hesketh.
Excellent. For the record, Scott Hesketh, traffic engineer for the consultant. We submitted the report dated August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three in response to the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three staff comments and commission comments. I'm going to skip over the first response because that had to do with the the text change amendment. Mr. Charles had a comment about traffic safety of this particular application, wondering about the ability of vehicles to exit the facility, make a U-turn at the at the first curb cut. There is a median break in the Route five fifteen in in the Berlin Turnpike in in front of Meadow Lane. That curb cut is signed as no U-turns at that location. So you U-turns are prohibited at that particular location. So anyone exiting this facility wishing to make a U-turn will have to go down to.
And you know, they won't. You already know they won't, but that's okay.
I can't stop people from violating the law. If they want to be criminals and do that, then I guess they certainly can.
All right.
But they are prohibited from making U-turns at Meadow Lane. They should go down to Bishop's Curve where there is a left turn slot available for them to make a U-turn at that particular location. In terms of parking and emergency access, I think you've heard that explained already previously, so I'll skip over that. In terms of the the public comments and comments from the commission, again, there was comments about the traffic volume data being old. We had heard our initial report based on the Condot two hundred and fifty, two thousand fifteen data. We did go back and conduct manual turning movement counts at the intersection of the Berlin Turnpike and Worthington Ridge. The traffic volume counts during the morning peak hour were nearly identical in the southbound direction. In the afternoon direction, the two thousand third twenty-three counts we just conducted were slightly higher than the two thousand and fifteen data. Did use a one percent per year growth rate to the our our observed counts to grow it to a twenty twenty-five design year. We reconducted the capacity analysis calculations for the proposed site driveway. In our initial report, we presented that the site driveway approach would operate at level service B about fourteen seconds of delay. Under the new analysis, it's still a level service B with fourteen seconds of delay. During the afternoon peak hour, we had previously stated would be level service C about twenty-one seconds of delay. And under the revised analysis, we're looking at a level service C twenty-three seconds of delay. So very similar results, very similar traffic volumes based on the updated counts. We were asked to provide additional accident data. Our initial report was a three-year accident analysis. We did go back and do a five-year analysis. We also extended the the reach of the of the accident data we reviewed. So between the years of calendar years of two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-two, there were a total of sixty-three accidents recorded between Worthington Ridge and Bishop's Curve on the on the Turnpike. Thirty-two of those occurred in the southbound directions. Only two of those occurred at commercial driveways in that section of roadway. Most of the accidents occurred at the intersection of Worthington Ridge and at at Meadow Lane. Twenty-seven of the accidents were rear-end accidents. There were nineteen angled accidents, six sideswipe accidents, and there were ten accidents involving fixed objects. Most of the accidents, thirty-nine, were property damage only. And there was one accident involved suspected serious injury and eleven accidents with suspected minor injuries. And there were twelve accidents with possible injuries. And that's that's the way the DOT and the and the police department categorized us. There was a comment about whether or not the police department had reviewed the application. I know the comments which you received said no comment from the police department. I did speak with Chief McNally of the of the police department, and he confirmed that he did receive the application. He did review it. They reviewed the intersection site distances. They looked at the traffic volumes which we had presented, and it was their opinion that there was no no issues related to the proposed development. The application has been made to the Department of Transportation. We submitted the site plan package and the traffic volume data to the Department of Transportation for their review. It is their highway. We will need an encroachment permit from them in order to construct the site driveway. And we will reflect any possible changes that that they may request of us during their review. In short, if this commission were to see fit to approve this particular site plan, it's my professional opinion that the traffic volumes associated with this particular development can readily be accommodated on the existing roadway network and that the traffic volumes associated will not result in a detrimental impact to the health, safety and welfare of the of the general public. If there's any specific questions, I'll be happy to address.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Hesketh? Okay, Ms. Miller?
I was just wondering, is there a reason why you went with a manual survey or check of traffic instead of going to the Connecticut DOT and get one that would at least be out there for a week or two instead of just doing a two-hour stat in the morning and two-hour stat in the afternoon?
Yes, in our original report, we had traffic volume data from the DOT from two thousand fifteen, two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-one. The eighteen and twenty-one data was significantly lower than the two thousand fifteen data. And that's why we use that data in our report because we wanted to be conservative in our analysis. And with the COVID that had been going on, we figured the traffic volumes were significantly lower in those after years because of that. When the commission asked for updated traffic volume information, we could have gone out and installed tube counts, but we wanted to get the data back as quickly as possible, be able to have an opportunity to analyze the data and present it. And between the date of the last commission meeting in August thirty-first, there simply wasn't enough time to get out there, install traffic volume tubes. They're notorious for coming up, especially on a on a roadway such as the the Berlin Turnpike. So rather than install those, have them disrupted and not be able to present data to you, we went with the turning movement counts at the intersections as a as a substitute. So that's the reasoning behind that.
It's unfortunate that you didn't take the request when I did it, I think, four weeks ago, asking for a Connecticut DOT current traffic study because at this meeting, you would have the current information. Because I do believe that with the development that's coming down the highway on the Berlin Turnpike, it it will impact. I I do travel this this road every single day, and I have for thirty-five years when I worked at Northeast Utilities. And I can tell you, the traffic flow has changed. And once we start building more down on the Berlin Turnpike, Peterbilt is going to be coming in where the bowling alley is. There definitely will be an impact on this road. And it's unfortunate that you didn't do the tube count because that would have been more accurate.
Yeah.
I think in my response, I indicated that in my original report, I gave you data from two thousand fifteen, eighteen and twenty-one. I think in my response, I indicated that in my original report, I gave you data from two thousand fifteen, eighteen and twenty-one. Those are the three latest traffic volume counts from the Connecticut Department of Transportation. And the two thousand and fifteen data was the highest volume, and that's what we based our report on to be conservative. So I believe that you have an analysis which uh which reflects current traffic volume conditions and 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 the highest volumes which were observed out there over the last uh nine-year period. So.
Yeah, uh, just before you leave, Mr. Hesketh, really quick, just so I I can clear this up before um and then I can have the information. So when you did the the manual count, how many days did that encompass and what hours and days of the week were used?
Well, the traffic traffic volume data is included in the August thirty-first uh report.
Okay, well, I'll find it then.
We did a two-hour count in the morning on eight twenty-three and a two-hour, I'm sorry, two two hours in the afternoon and eight twenty-three between the hours of three thirty and five thirty in the afternoon.
That's right, three thirty and five thirty.
Seven to nine in the morning on that same day.
And seven AM to and when you went to the police for the review on nine AM, when you went to the police, you told them that this was a hand count data? Performed on those dates?
The police reviewed the original traffic information which we submitted.
Okay, and that was the two thousand and fifteen data?
The original report, yes, based on the fifteen data, that's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, anyone um, just really quick, okay? Staff, anything at this point before we move on? Yeah.
I just wanna note that the staff summary I handed out includes this as well.
Okay, all righty.
Yeah, so the record should just note again, this the staff comments were handed out. She handed out a copy of the housing plan. Because that's really appropriately part of this record. Um, anything else?
Yep.
Did you wanna get any? I know I I think that maybe Mr. Smith wants to offer some.
Okay.
I don't know if you wanna hear from Mr. Trolder, he's raising his hand.
Yeah, Mr. Okay, I wish I think we'll we probably will given um, okay. Mr. Trolder.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair Glenn Shalder for the record. Um, I just wanted to uh respond a little bit to the uh uh report from Giuliano Associates. Um, I think the issue here with regard to the trees and their risk, if you will, from damage and loss. I I the latest plans that I have is the April plan. So we heard comments here tonight that there's information on the plans, that the trees will be replaced. My comment was gonna be make sure that that comment is on the plan, so I haven't seen him yet. So I'm gonna work with Maureen, if you will, to get the most recent plans and have information for you. I think it's important for the commission to recognize that what are probably forty or fifty-foot arbor by day are gonna get replaced by six or eights. So it's it's a vastly different outcome. And it I think in your deliberations, don't think of the trees that are there. I think that it that the trees that are are probably gonna end up being there, because it's unlikely that those trees will survive. Um, so again, I would request a written proposal of their response plan. Uh, uh, Mr. Georgina has indicated here tonight that they plan on doing it, but we need to get this on the plans uh so that it can be uh managed in the future. I think with regard to the issue of parking spaces, th- there are two-bedroom units, so two parking spaces are required. There is no basement. These are slab-on grade, so there's really no storage inside these units. And it's highly likely that for a number of the units, the garage is gonna become a storage area. So that produces, excuse me, a problem if we have two cars, because there's not place to put them. So the applicants have indicated that on their plan, and again, this could be the the most recent plan, which I haven't had the opportunity to see yet, and I I apologize for that. They've indicated that the cars could park on the inside of the island and that outside of the island would be the travel lane for people or emergency vehicles, et cetera, and they're gonna have signs. And again, I I haven't seen that yet, because I haven't seen the drawing. If you look at the design of the interior island, there's not a lot of perimeter space there that doesn't interfere with driveways. So there's not a lot of parking spaces. But I think at nineteen oh six, we got attorney, we had a drawing that says the fire chief, fire marshal, everybody can look at and say, yes, you know what, even for school buses, given Mr. Zigmont's experience. You know what? Okay, this is gonna work and we're not gonna have obstructed driveways. But if we're gonna put ten pounds of cars into a five-pound capacity, those are issues which are central and integral to public health and safety. And I think, again, we need to get the information, um, rather than say it's an internal document, it it needs to be part of the record. Um, and I think we need to get that as soon as possible. Um, I do have an issue or concern about, uh, I guess I'm gonna call it Magical Unit fourteen, which is the declared handicapped unit. If you look at the detail for those units, it's in the southwest corner of the site and it's uh the second duplex building which faces uh towards the Berlin Turnpike. It's the northernmost unit in that building. Um, I I take Mr. Georgina's comment that the driveway is twenty-seven feet wide. I didn't measure it out tonight, if you will. He also knows that driveway is split between the two units, which means each unit gets a thirteen-and-a-half-foot driveway. But the parking requirement, according to Mr. Georgina's statement, is sixteen feet. So some of this parking space is gonna intrude into the neighbor's driveway. We can't have that. If we're gonna design a handicapped unit with a handicapped access, it needs to be a handicap space. So it needs to be the appropriate dimension. It needs to be changed to show that. It doesn't need to have a handicapped symbol painted on it or a sign, right? But it needs to be indicated and the access to the unit in terms of meeting ADA requirements needs to be addressed as well. So let's let's just say for the sake of conversation, that's the outside of the unit, right? The doorway has to be accessible and inside the handicap unit is on the second floor again. So how does that work, right? We got a handicap unit with uh bedrooms on the second floor. Um, so I think we need some additional information there. I think it's a little ironic, there's two spaces in the unit. Brian, is that you? I'm messing with him. I've known Brian for years.
I'm I'm on mute, so I yeah. Say goodbye.
So we have a scenario here now again with the parking spaces that the handicapped space is outside in snowy and other conditions, and the inside space is gonna be for perhaps another rock of the unit. So we don't, I I'm not really versed on the ADA requirements, but it almost seems a little bit backwards and I'll defer to the building official and others who have much more experience on this particular issue. Again, I had a quick conversation uh with uh Mr. Georgina, and so I think, again, some of the information that's been provided with regard to the maintenance manual and everything else uh is uh been included and been addressed. I think that covers the major issues that I had for the commission, but I think we can't just rely on verbal testimony. We're gonna need drawings, partic- and and how particularly uh Mr. Georgina has indicated that the vegetation landscaping is on the most recent drawings. I can take a look at those. Um, but I think with regard to the emergency accessibility, truck movements, um handicapped uh unit, we 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 need revised plans that actually indicate what's going on there. So I think those are my comments on the on the site plan.
Thank you. Um, Missers? I, all right, because while it's still, yeah, we're still, I know, we're um still in a public hearing.
I have a document that was mailed today from the applicant on a sample deed restriction.
Okay.
That out.
Yeah.
We did this evening.
Yeah, so we can all look at it. And I mean, yeah, does the public have any input regarding this application at this point? I know that um it's in wetlands right now. And obviously, we're getting a lot more information and so it's probably gonna be looking at um continuing. Um, and uh do we need a, do we need an extension from the applicant to continue the public hearing? Yes, we do. And is the applicant willing to extend on this item? I know, we're trying to move it along here.
For the record, Chris Smith on behalf of the other applicant. Uh, the applicant would be willing to extend it um October twelfth.
Okay, so not until well, yeah, because we they're wetlands, okay, October twelfth.
Certainly, if wanted to.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And uh just for the record, the way the state law works with wetlands is this this commission can close. You just can't act on it until the wetlands commission acts.
Yes, exactly. All right, thank you. All right, commission.
Um, I think we should give some guidance uh if we do want to request um the letter from the certified consulting arborist as well.
Okay.
So I don't know what everybody else feels if they.
Well, no, I think it's a good idea. I think it's a very good idea. Um, I just, is that something that we have to put out there?
Well, they don't need.
Okay, all right, yeah. So you would want to put the request in for the cert- certified?
If everybody else feels that it's.
Everyone, I think everyone's on page with that. Yeah, so let that put them on notice for that.
Certified consulting arborist, not just an arborist, certified consulting arborist.
Okay. Good deal. All right, and so.
Thank you.
All right, so do we have a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue to September twenty-eighth.
Uh, yes, so that we can take additional testimony. We have a motion by Mr. Rossi. Do we have a second? Okay, second by Mr. Hamel. Further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? So moved. All right, great. Uh, next up is the subdivision application of M. Akor Konferowitz for three residential lots at map eleven dash one, block one twenty-seventh, lot sixteen, two thirty-five, Weathersfield Road. Okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, so oh, yeah, well, just, she has a request, I think.
I know, I I um our engineer is traveling and he would like to participate if we can call into him.
Uh, not.
Call into the meeting.
Can he call into the Zoom?
Um, he said, let the planner know my number is such and such, and then that was it, but I don't know.
Is he, it, we normally don't.
I can read you the information of how to call in if she wants.
Well, yeah, they do have a dial by location, but still.
Two or three number?
No, she's just gonna take a picture of it.
Okay.
We got twenty minutes. We should have had all those other people up first. We should have had Weathersfield, we should have had everything up first. Well, we did that because the other people stayed, so. Joe Don't Street's still on the meeting. Yep, I think we should be able to. Yep. Who am I listening to?
I think we're going to the applicant, then he uh, yeah.
Yeah, there he is, okay. I thought I lost you.
No, no.
All right. All right.
Good evening. My name is Jack Gilmarten with J L Survey located two twelve Old Brickyard Lane, representing the applicant on this um. Um, our site plans that you've got has not changed. We haven't done any modifications from from our last meeting because there hadn't been any comments that um came about until yesterday morning. We got some comments from engineering. Uh, basically, some, he wants a little bit tweaking of the drainage system. But his summary at the end of the uh his comments were that there's nothing significant that he could work with the applicant as part of the uh um petition of approval to get those issues cleaned up. Now, I think when we closed last meeting, there was two, two issues that I thought were the reason you guys tabled it. One was on your comment about where's the water going?
Yep.
And uh and then this is a knock about going to wetlands if we had to do any changes. So after the meeting, I met with Jim Horrible and to just reassure what our 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 um commitment was to do the cleaning up of the conservation easement. And he assured me that as part of the, and I think he's talked to Maureen about this, as far as the um condition of the uh cleaning up the the conservation easement is to make sure the water is properly channeled. If that includes creating a channel, if it's not defined enough, that we would do that. And that we would not have to go back to wetlands for either one of those i- issues. It wouldn't have to be a reapplication to wetlands on that. So water will be controlled going back going out. The drainage systems that we have, uh, we've designed, has been approved by engineering. Um, as a matter of fact, one of his comments today about our our curtain drain could be downsized, because there's as he said, you're not, he told us that in that there's not gonna be any water coming off the road with the new sidewalk and the new curbs. It it's the water's gonna be restricted off the into the main storm source system. Um, there's really, I mean, for what we've done, we've got, we dotted our I's and crossed our T's. We've we've met uh the staff, we've gotten uh, I believe, approval for everything that we needed to be submit. And um, I don't know if there's any questions you would have or regarding right now, but I think we're pretty much there.
Okay.
I don't have any questions at the moment. I do have a letter that was submitted to the town that it was requested to be read into record.
Okay, go ahead.
Berlin Zoning Commission, re, two thirty-five Weathersfield Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Who knows, Judy, I apologize if I get the name wrong, Lapaverta and Sal Lapaverta of three, seven, three Weathersfield Road, Berlin, Connecticut. I, Judy Lapaverta and Sal Lapaverta oppose the zone change, zoning change of two thirty-five Weathersfield Road for the following reasons. Evaluation of nearby properties. Two, if you make an exception in this case, how can you further deny the same requests? The others in area sample across from two thirty-five may someday be developed. Three, why do we even have zoning if it is so easily changed to suit one person's interest? Respectfully, Judy Lapaverta and Sal Lapaverta.
I'm sorry, Brian, was that the only communication?
That was the only thing.
Okay, all righty.
The record.
Yes.
You have a letter that was dropped off at the office.
Okay. All righty.
Thank you.
Do you have it already? No, that came in.
No, oh, oh. I'll take a.
This letter came into the office today by um a neighbor who was out of state. No, no, nobody did. Out of the presses.
You realize, of course, this is a very difficult lot. For a lot of different reasons. And one of them is, is the whole drainage thing. Mr. Gilmore, I mean, I really have problems with it.
You have problems with the drainage. This lot has been the catch basin for the neighborhood for years, and nobody ever cared about the person that lived there before that had a, put up with all the storm water coming off the road. But you gotta look at these lots of what we're doing. We're, we're, we're putting a drainage system in on these that are designed to take care of the water because of imperious areas for the new houses and the driveway. That's our responsibility. Putting a curbing, and, and I was really glad the day you said we'd have to put sidewalks in. Once we put these sidewalks and these curvings in, all this storm water that's coming off the road is not going to get into these lots anymore. It's not going to get into the lots. And that, when you keep saying, or people keep showing us pictures of what has happened in the past, I don't argue that. That has happened in the past, but it's not going to happen. And your town engineer has said, the town engineer has even said we didn't even need the curtain, the French drain because no water's going to get into it because it's all going to be stopped because of the curbing and the sidewalk. This is your town engineer's comment. And he's even said in his comments that we sent yesterday morning, that maybe we'd downsize the French drain through a smaller pipe because we won't need it for a French drain is it's really acting as an access for the overflow on our Caltech chambers. So when you, I know you're saying what it was, it's not what it's going to be because we're pushing the water to where it should be going on the storm sewer system. Last meeting, this, this was submitted by one of the neighbors, and I think it's excellent. I love it. Because what it is, it's a pictures of drainage during August 14th storm. According to Jim Horrible, one of the worst storms that's hit your town recently, four inches of rain. And, and it shows the water in the road and it shows particularly on the far side of the road where there's a, there's a trench along there, the swale. They're showing that in a major, this was a major, major storm, it worked. The water stayed over on that side of the road, and even if the engineer's comments was that it didn't cross the center line. So that, the worst storm you've had in years in the town. The, the, the road, the, half the road worked, is what I'm trying to say, into your storm sewer system. And then once you put, you gotta remember, this is a valley. It comes down from a one drain and then down a hill, it goes into the storm sewer. What's happening now is sidewalk, where the sidewalk ends, water's coming from that direction from the south, that, it just skirts right around. It skirts right around into the lot, over into the yards there. And then on the other side where it comes down, it comes down our driveway, because our driveway is lower than the road, is, is the driveway goes down. It just, it runs off into the lot that way. That's where the water's coming in. We're going to put a sidewalk in, the sidewalks, back of walks got to be eight tenths above the, above the gutter line. So we're going to be putting a buffer all through that. The storm water that you guys have seen in all these pictures, which were very valid, and you see them in this report here, that's not going to happen. And that's where it's, that are coming from your town engineer. He's saying that it's not going to happen, the water, storm water can't get into it anymore because of the blockage of the curbing and the, and the sidewalks.
Can I, can I chime in, Mr. Gilmore? I, I was talking, this is Micah Hearn, town engineer. I had nothing, I, yeah. My, my comment, my comment on the front, on the curtain drain was that now that you're no longer relying on infiltration for these systems because you're bringing them above grade, the curtain drain doesn't really serve a function. As far as the curb goes, there were no comments from me on the curb.
Okay, it was Jim Horrible.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hearn. All right.
The record, the sheet I handed out when I returned to the room was the the comments from town engineer, Micah Hearn.
So, Mike, we did get some comments yesterday morning, but at this point, we're not going to, we didn't want to change, change the drawings. But he, I think his comments in summary, Mike, was that we can, as a condition of this thing goes forward, we can work those different issues out on that, on his, his issues.
Yeah, and I can just add to that, they're really refining the design because there's not a lot of detail on the drawings with respect to certain connections. So we can work those out if the commission decides to go forward with it as conditions. They're, conceptually speaking, they've done what they can with this site, which is, as you pointed out, it's a shallow groundwater condition and it's, it's a little bit challenged. But as far as addressing my comments, they've done that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hearn. Go ahead, Brian.
Just to clarify, from what you said earlier, upon talking with the wetlands recently, you can actually dig out that conservation easement so to mitigate?
Yeah, if we, if it has to, if we have to channel the water, we can do that. Now, I don't know. This is the conservation easement. And this is our property. But the, we can only, as part of our application, a part of our design to do what we got to do, we can only give you, you know, we can only tell you what we can do as far as the applicants are. The town can go in for this conservation easement and do their work anytime. They have the right to do that. But this yellow area is on this lot, which is a lot behind us, and that's still, that is also the conservation easement. They've been very, very concerned about the drainage issues on their lot, and I'm sure that if the time comes down to when we're starting to work on this conservation easement and the area that's easement on their lot, I, I would imagine they would be agreeable to say, okay, let's, let's fix this all the way through. But we can only give you guarantee on this part, that's where our layout is. But according to Jim Horrible, our agreement is that we clean this out, the channel, and get it into the, get it into the existing channels that are further downstream.
Okay.
How much, oh, as far as the channeling, the depth, like how far are you thinking about going down to?
You know, it's not, there isn't a lot of gray, so I don't, I don't know. It's, you know, it doesn't always have to be deep as much as it can be wide, you know, like a swale. I think, but if you can, if you can swale it, then you can, you can control a little bit better. So.
Okay.
Andy Stehovjak, professional engineer. I just wanted to mention that flow through wetlands, which most of this water in this valley travels down, I call it the factory in the wetland lot. And it stretches almost all the way down to the Madison River. The flow through a wetland doesn't necessarily have to be in a pipe or channel. The purpose is for the wetlands is to act as a sponge and to soak up the they call it flash flooding, detain the water so that this, this wetland acts that way, and all wetlands act that way. But we want to do it as much as we can on our side, you know.
And that's always a concern. You don't want to, you don't want to dry, you don't want to channel and dry up. So we want, we want the, what we want to do is divert channel the water away from the rear lot, but it, you know, out to where we're safer for the neighborhood. That's what we're trying to do.
All right.
And it is, for the record, that first letter you read, we're not doing a zone change.
Yeah. Okay, Maureen, do you have anything you want to add at this time? Because we're still in the public hearing, so.
No, not at this time. I think it came down to it being engineering comments.
Yeah.
And the conflicting opinions of the design engineer and the neighbors.
Yeah.
Engineer, and then reconciling with the expertise of the town engineer.
Okay. All right, and the.
I would, I would just say for the record, a lot of the comments are coming from their experts, the town engineers that are aware of these things and reviewed them himself, and he's not seeing it as an issue is what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, okay. And that the lady who was up there before to get the contact for their engineer was the neighbor's engineer?
The, the woman who was.
Was here.
As I walked out about the telephone call was the neighbor, one of the neighbors.
Okay, so that's her.
The budding property owner across the street.
All right.
She didn't invite them.
Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, so yes, if you want to. Okay. All right, well, I mean, is there something that you want to address the commission? Okay, and I don't think Mr. Gilmore has any problem with that. Because we're trying to cut through the rest of this agenda as quickly as possible. So that folks can go home.
Okay, Lori Budney on 242 Weathersfield Road. First of all, I wanted to say that Dave and Donna Lusick could not be here, but they wanted air, it was known on this issue. They also felt that the street curbing proposed in the front of the current lot 16 will send all the storm, storm water runoff into the existing street. Now, what I showed in my photographs that I presented was that we had 4.1 inches of rain on August 18. That was not a rain, a rainfall that hasn't occurred in the past 18 months. It was, it was not even as much as we had 18 months ago, so that this isn't like something that happens once every decade. This happens every year, year and a half or so. What's shown evident here is that the storm water that ran from my property did not come up over the road because the road has a crown and it didn't exceed that. So that's why their whole concept of having their, raising their property, putting curbing in as if the water is all coming down on my property and rushing into theirs. And that's not necessarily the case because the water comes down the road, down Weathersfield Road, there's a, there's a hill and it comes right through the wetlands, and of course, it comes down on my property and it pools there also. Also, I wanted to say that the applicant's plan to elevate a portion of each lot will only serve to concentrate the accumulating water along the perimeter of the property, thereby exacerbating the abutting property's flooding issues. Also, to, to our knowledge, no sampling pits or routing analysis was performed to date. Thus, there is questionable due diligence on the part of the applicant. This lack of information is a detriment for the board to make an informed decision. Test pits are instrumental. They are a sample of the composition and structure of the subsurface. And the routing analysis analyzes how a burst of or prolonged period of rain will flow and affect the severity of the flooding. Neither has been done to our knowledge. And I don't know if our engineer is actually able to communicate. I haven't heard anything. Okay, I just wanted to make.
This is Steve Trinkus. Yeah, if you can hear me, this is Steve Trinkus.
Okay, yes, Mr. Trinkus. We can hear you.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, the comments that Lori just made are correct. So I guess the question I have, so the applicant is now raising the grade by some amount so that the cul-de-sac systems, the bottom are now sitting on top of original grade instead of being in the grade, can deconfirm that to me? As I, I'm driving and don't see the plans.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting the affirmative nod from Mr. Gilmore. So that's, that is correct.
How much is the grade being raised?
Mr. Gilmore, the question to you, what are we looking at for an increase in the grade?
They, they, they basically were, were putting the these are, this is where the structures are on the, on the high end of, of the, of the lot. We're sitting them on the existing ground. And, and whereas it slopes down, then there's going to be a gap that's going to be filled. So, but basically, original system, which the town engineer was concerned with, was that the, the ground, we were putting them too close into the groundwater. So we redesigned this thing to take them out of the groundwater, which she's again satisfied with. And the reason we know the groundwater was, was we, there were test pits done.
All right, Mr. Gilmore states that there were test pits done. Does that help you out, Mr. Trinkus?
Yeah, I guess I would just ask if he could take one of the profiles of the test pit and just describe the depth and what each soil layer was, just on one of them that's in the vicinity of one of the cul-de-sac systems.
Okay.
Andy, Andy Stehovjak, the soil profile is similar to the soils in all the neighboring lots. You're not using the soil profile to get rid of water. So the question is not germane by the other engineer. Question is, we're putting, using the detention basins above existing groundwater as a result of doing test pits or putting pipes into the ground. And so the flow is just being detained and then dribbled off the site. So the big question is, are we doing anything worse to make the drainage worse in the area? No, we've shown the town engineer's satisfaction that our detention, because it's basically DC line, plastic pipes, detailed by Caltech to anybody's satisfaction, that this will detain the groundwater and dribble it into the ground. This is the additional ground rainwater off the roof and impervious driveway. That's all we have to show. That's all we're doing. We're not saving, we're not changing the drainage for the whole area. And neighbors that are concerned about what's happening down below, are they doing anything to help the neighbors? Or are they just preventing, trying to prevent us from helping the neighbors by putting in curbs, which will protect all three and Mr. Lusak's downhill properties? So where our proposal meets the minimum, it doesn't make things worse, and it helps the neighbors. Why would you be against it?
It's kind of. Excuse me, I'm, I'm not being against it. I'm asking a question as to what the soil profile looked like. Where did you hit groundwater in a test pit? That's a very relevant question.
It may be to you.
I greatly appreciate an answer.
Because we're not using the existing groundwater or soil in any way other than the fact that unless you do a test pit every place in, on the lot, you don't know what's there. The soil changes. The general conditions, I could speculate, or I could make a professional opinion, and so can he. But that is not germane. The question is, we're putting everything on top and dribbling it in through a pipe running along the road. We're putting in curbing and sidewalk, which protects the downhill properties, so we're protecting at least three neighbors. We're making the road better because it'll drain off. And we're making the properties, all the properties downhill drier because our curtain drain drains the groundwater. So all we've, we're not making things worse at all. And we're taking certain three steps to protect the neighbors down below. Why would you be against?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, I, I, I would just make one final comment. You know, again, not having seen the plans, I'm a little bit of a loss. However, you know, detention systems where you're only meeting control of the peak rate is not eliminating the volume. So the volume of the runoff from any rainstorm is going to, from the roof and driveway that's directed to the cul-de-sac system is ultimately going to be discharged, you know, however they have it designed onto the ground, which will then drain, you know, to the south towards neighboring properties. The volume is not being reduced. Volume is only reduced by infiltration, which does not appear to occur here. And I, again, believe the soils will not infiltrate anything, so there will be increased volumes being directed to the downgrade in properties. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public, because I know we're in the public hearing, does anyone want to comment?
Can I talk a little bit?
Yeah, you, you can, but I just want, the public is also here, so I just want to make sure I'm scanning and making, being fair to them. Okay, go ahead. And then, and then we're going to have to call the meeting.
Why do you, why do we put curbs in? You put curbs in to control the road and the storm water. You put curbs in to control the road and the stormwater. It's kind of a.
I always thought they put curbs in so people wouldn't hit my house, but that's okay.
But I mean, you know, I worked for 31 years for the town of West Hartford Engineering. And it's the most ridiculous comment I've ever heard. Don't put curbs in because it's going to control the water into the road. That's where it's supposed to be.
Well.
Trying to keep it in the road.
I.
Put it into the storm system that's out there to work.
Okay, I, I.
The other part of the, his comments about the drainage and all that, we're not looking to drain what you keep seeing out there in these, in these awful pictures of all the stormwater. That's going to not be there anymore. We're only trying to drain the roofs and these, these, these are 16 chambers. We had eight or nine before. We're almost doubling the system. And I, I, that's why I think the town engineer is really satisfied with this. It was an overkill system to, to take care of the roofs and the, uh, uh, the driveways.
Okay, understood. Okay, um, anyone else, commission? Yes, Ms. Miller.
I make it a point to go by this property each time we have rain because I always see something ponding. I'm looking at page two, figure three, and it looks as if there's ponding in the front. But I always usually see ponding in the back toward where the abreviades are at. So you, you see what I'm talking about?
Which, are you looking at?
Figure three, the bottom one on page two.
Yeah, that's in, that's, that's in, that's in the, that's in the back.
That looks like it's in the front because the abreviades are in the back. I mean, I.
You've got the split rail fence in the front.
Right, and right behind that is a, a nice little.
Behind that.
Right, and usually behind those two trees is where I usually see the ponding, behind those two trees in front of the abreviades. So, pardon?
I, I can't have you shouting out. You've got to come here, but please let Ms. Miller go with her.
So just please explain to me what you're going to do. I know you say you're going to grade it forward. You're going to put some drainage in the back where I normally see the ponding?
Where you normally see the ponding is, is going to be, um, there's a whole landscaping plan working. That's, that's, that's the area where the wetlands is.
Right.
Back there, and it's going to be fenced so that we can't go into it. It's going to be a split rail fence around with a gate so they can get in to do anything they want to do, you know, going to clean. And, uh, and it's going to be all planted. So that area ponding, we're not, we're not changing the grade at all. We can't.
Putting plants there isn't going to stop it from ponding because you have.
But what's going to happen with, where the houses are going to be built, where, as we have the houses up higher, it's, it's basically, I guess a good way to look at it is if this is the way the lots are now, when we put the houses in, this is going to be like that. We're going to be putting the houses in the higher, it's going to be draining. Front yards are designed to drain out back over to the road.
Yep.
Into our drainage system.
And the back is going to drain.
The back is, the back is only going to catch water coming down from God. She only drops straight down into the yard.
Yep.
And, and so it's not going to be, not coming off the road like you're always seeing. All that water you're seeing is coming off the road.
Okay.
That's going to stop.
See, I never even knew it was ponding in the front. I was more concerned about the stuff in the back.
This, this is a crazy storm. I don't care what anybody says. Jim Horrible is telling me that most great roads.
In, in all fairness, I go by it all the time. So it's not just this storm. I go by them all the time. Ever since you guys came on my radar here, I go by it all the time. My other question is, is that talking about clearing this easement, if you go past this, this property and you go to the next road, I, I can't think of the name of it, but I always drive by, by this house and then I turn around up at the top. But I look at all the properties on the left-hand side and there's another property that has a nice little pooling going on too. My concern is, is if we do anything with this easement by clearing it or deterring it, are we going to be dumping additional water into any houses further down that road? As I said, I go by it all the time. And there is a house that has a nice little pond going right now in their side, side backyard.
Well, first of all, all the stormwater that you're seeing ponding goes there anyhow. That's where it goes. I mean, after it leaves our yard, it goes to where you're talking about. The only difference that we're going to do is we're going to keep it out of our yards, put it out onto the road storm sewer system and then direct it through, uh, uh, through the conservation easement. And whether it's a, a channel necessary or what, you know, Jim Horrible feels is the ultimate goal there is, and then control and direct it back, you know, into, and then into that big factory land that it eventually all goes into. So, now, on the.
I'm not, I haven't seen the factory land. I've seen other residential areas.
That's, that, that's, and, and Andy's got a picture, you know, the, a drawing of all that. That's where all the, ultimately, that's where all the water goes and then out to the Medabassett. So.
Can you, can you talk into the microphone? I'm sorry.
This is a picture of the Weathersfield Road. The yellow is the lot that we're talking about. There's a large wetland and the water comes down through, first into, onto our lot and then it goes down this way all the way through. So all the water just goes that, that way. So.
For the record, you're pointing to the northwest, east, northeast.
Northeast, yes. This is the factory, Ozdick, and then this is the wetland. So the water, it, it channels. And then the reason the easement stops halfway up the lot is that the water makes the turn. So it doesn't go back all the way through. The ponding and the, to the rear of the lot is caused by those neighbors by putting in the berms and the arbivideae, they cause the pond. But if we put in the curb and sidewalk here, a lot of the water that you see on some of these pictures in the front yard won't be there because it'll be, it'll be pushed off into this drainage easement that the town established, excuse me, in 1995, which then goes down through the weather. So we'll be protecting these neighbors to the back with the curb, sidewalk and the curtain drain.
Yes, you're, we're in public. We're in the public hearing, so yes, as long as you use your microphone, state your name and address for the record. What?
Yes, Lori Budney, Weathersfield Road, 242. They keep referring to the fact that curbing is going to stop the water. But, and yet he also says that this, uh, this 4.1 inches of rain is, is a huge amount. But yet it didn't cross the road. It peaked and it just sat on my property because it came, it didn't cross onto their side. So you act as if this curbing is like a dam that you're going to stop any water encroaching. The water is coming down the hill on that side of the road. And it, and as one of the members of the board said, it does come down across other neighboring properties and saturates all that soil. And if, as the engineer asked, um, you know, if test, uh, the soil profile is important. And yet you keep saying, oh, yeah, we did that and the engineer agreed. But where are the results of these, where's the soil profile? And, uh, that's, that's, you know, you just keep talking about stopping it, but we don't see factual information on if there were test pits done and if there was a soil analysis done, where, where is the results? Did you produce that for us to see?
Good.
Okay.
Just for the record, her report. Go to page three, figure, uh, figure five. You can see the water from her yard looking across and the water's crossing the road in her, in her picture. It's completely saturating going across through our split rail fence by her pictures.
Okay, well, I'm not going to have the back and forth going. I know the hour's late, but it's late for all of us, so.
So what Andy's trying to explain to everybody here, and I think what the town is, if.
Tim, you're not.
If this is the ground, we're putting a drainage system up here above it, picking up the water. You don't need soil tests down here because this is where we're working. And that's what we, we did, he did test out there. He saw what the groundwater was and they submitted that. He sat down with the town engineer and that's why the town engineer didn't like our original drainage system because of what we did for, for tests. So now we're putting the whole drainage system up in the air, if you will, above it and, and fill. That's why we don't need the, they keep going, they keep going back to the same old dog. These things we've gone through every meeting and.
Okay.
It's been reviewed.
All right, I understand, Mr. Zigma, don't, I'm sorry.
Joan, I'd, I'd like to just, uh, say something. We, we've been at these meetings for water problems since this division came here. Our thing is the site plan, okay? The wetlands is the wetlands and water. The town engineer is the water. Jim Horrible is the water. And if they're satisfied, I can't question their abilities. Okay? I have to go with their, their expertise, which is expertise advising us as commission, okay? And the wetland commission has addressed it and is, is going to be addressed in a conservation area with Jim Horrible going out there and, and redoing the, the, cleaning out the conservation area and redoing the conservation area for water flow a little bit better. I have to rely on their expertise, not us. We are not the expertise on this. And I understand everyone's concern, okay, very much, okay? I, I can, I know this.
All right, okay.
From 1995, but, but it's, uh, when, when the wetlands commission and the, our, our expertise advises something, I have to go with their expertise.
Okay. All right, June, Ms. Daley.
Michael Ahern is online. Did we want any input from him? He sent us that note.
Well, yeah, he addressed us before, but I can circle back to him. But Maureen, did you want to say anything? I, because the hour is getting late.
So I want to make sure that because the hearing has gone on for several meetings.
Yeah.
Um, that I refer you back to in any, um, decision you make. I refer you back to the staff report with updated comments that were dated August 17. If anyone can't find those, we can redistribute them to you. But that includes the, um, and, and they aren't updated beyond that. It's the new town engineer, the town engineer's newest comments. So some of these comments aren't relevant. But want to remind you that the, any decision to approve would have to include a, a decision requiring the request to leave the open space and the other items on that staff report. So I just want to make sure that I get brought back into the realm of.
Yeah.
That when you.
Okay, all right. Anyone else on the commission have a problem or a question? Okay? So.
A motion to approve.
Well, we know we're a public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry, I'm in the wrong spot.
No, that's okay. You're making a motion then to close the public hearing? Okay, Ms.
Motion, close public hearing, sorry.
All right, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hamel, further discussion. All those in favor? Aye, those opposed, so moved. Up next is the Sunny Border. I don't know. Well, I got to ask the commission, do we want to continue this or? I know, I know, that's okay. All right. Come on. Sunny Border subdivision application, Pistol Holding, Brook Holdings LLC for the property of Pierre Bennerup, Susan Sawicki, at 1709 Kensington Road map 20-4, block 72, lot 9, to create four residential lots in the eight, uh, the R86 zone. Okay. Who do we have? Does anyone have to go? We all hang in there. All right, hi.
Mark DeMore for Pistol Brook Holdings. Thank you for, uh, hearing with us here for.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for staying with us.
So, so since we last appeared before the commission, we resubmitted the drawings to, um, uh, to address comments we received from, from, uh, Maureen and, uh, the engineering department. Basically, oh, Jack, you want to maybe give a brief, uh, summary of what was done? But mostly clarifications for, for, uh, drainage and grading. Um, we've also added sightline information on the drawings. Um, we, we had a, um, a conversation with the, the police commission, or I should say with, uh, oh, Tom Bobic of the.
Traffic.
Traffic.
Traffic officer.
Who was satisfied with, with the sightline information. I'll let, uh, Jack just give a brief summary of what else was revised on the drawings.
Good evening, Jack Gil Martin, JL Survey, 212 Brickyard Lane. Basically, I, I apologize, I don't have your copy of them, but on, on staff comments, number one was the open space, number two was the building square, number three was putting a rear, uh, rear, uh, backset line on, on, on lot number 9B, which we did. The, um, we, we added some drainage details to the, uh, the plan. We made a note, um, that there was a comment about taking the, how is the structure's going to go down? We've put a note in that, uh, uh, we, that the, all structures will be removed upon approval of the subdivision. We're still, uh, looking at, uh, doing soil tests. Signature, signature, signature block has been reversed from upside down. There's a new tree chart. Uh, I kind of more detailed what trees we're going to put in. I put a tree, uh, chart on, uh, on a plan and listed the, where the trees would be going. There, uh, I don't have it, I, I think there's a Lindy and a, uh, I forgot what the other one is, but I, the trees are set up so they're all the same on one, on a one street and one, and then on, on the other, the other side. So, uh, site plan, we, we've adjusted the grading particularly. There was comments about, uh, we have level splitters in the back of the three lots that are on Kensington Road. It's how does it get out to the, to the, to the rear? The, the grading's been revised on that. Berlin Water, uh, we, you know, they, uh, they brought a, uh, we're, we're, I, I, I don't even remember what the comment was, but I, my comment here was we'll, we'll, we'll work with the water control to get to. Oh, I know where it was. This was about the, um, the wells, the quality of the water, the wells. Obviously, if we're going to dig wells, we've got to meet the, uh, uh, Berlin Water. It controls qualifications for a healthy well. So we do that. Um, the health department is also saying about the septic, whatever septic designs, we got to submit to them for review. Fire marshal, he brought up a, uh, cop, uh, uh, a need to put a, uh, uh, storm water retaining chamber, or not a storm water, a, a, a fire chamber on the, on the property. And, uh, we don't know what details, but we're willing to put in whatever the fire department wants us to put in. Uh, are you familiar with those? What they do is they, in areas where there's no, uh, water lines or anything like that, we, you put in an underground chamber for in case of fire they can pump out of. That's what that is. Conservation Commission, first comment goes back to, um, uh, the mitigation of, uh, what, what's going on with the soils, that having my number seven comment. And then, um, the next comment was number nine, um, site distances. They, uh, the plan has site distances on it now, um, that they were done tested. I think, uh, Mark had handed out some sheets last meeting, but we've, we've added them onto the drawing. And, uh, traffic engineering, uh, traffic police did come outside and worked took the shots themselves while we're, uh, when Mark was out there doing that. So that, and then, uh, then, then, then the town engineer had some comments about, uh, the individual sheets and some of them, I apologize, uh, because everything's done in layers and, and, uh, some of the layers were turned off. So we did add, uh, we did show, uh, there was a question about the existing grading versus proposed grading. It was hard to distinguish, he felt, so I've highlighted the, the, I, I heavy weighted the proposed grading so that it stands out and enlightened the, uh, existing grading, um, labeled them. Uh, he asked for, for better sight of, uh, uh, looking at the site. It was to put a, put both sides of the roads on, 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 uh, Kensington Road and Orchard Road. So the, the gutter lines have been shown on both sides now. And also wanted them labeled what they were, bit curve or curbing. So we've labeled those. The again, the additional topo was when we referred to that was for for the level splitters. And then we did add some details to the drawings. We took out I think there was a comment about having Caltech chambers in the in my details, but I took them out because we really don't. And I did put a level spreader detail on there that he was asking for. And in stormwater management, again, we just revise the grading. We're not we're not proposing a storm system on this because of the size of lots, the 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 design would be similar to what we did on Spruce Brook and Savage Hill, where we put level spreaders on the back to go back out to the rear yards. That's what we're doing with this lot.
Yeah, I would I would add the only difference is here we're we're effectively reducing significantly the 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 drainage flow on the property with the reduction of the impervious surfaces. So one of a couple of other things that I was going to add, I we did actually have a a meeting with Steve Wasnia regarding the fire tank. I guess I'm not sure what the right terminology is, the ten thousand gallon tank. And he identified a a rough area where where he thinks would be acceptable, which is basically in this corner area at the intersection. We didn't, you know, he he just basically just wanted, he he said, as long as we have an agreement to work that out once, you know, once if if the commission obviously approved the project, we would work that out with him for an exact location. He just wants it accessible to the roads, and he thought that that would work well with having access from both both the end of the corner. And then the only other thing was regarding the wells. That was a Ray Dharma comment, and I spoke to him. And, you know, testing of the wells is standard protocol. You know, once the wells are 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 drilled and the water's tested. So that that would be a condition of of the approval of the well, individual wells for each of the properties. Lastly, well, most importantly, I should say, is we would like to address, get back to the building square issue for the corner lot. And we have Attorney Weber here. He 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 had some, I guess, significant involvement in when when that, I guess, was was changed, right? So we'd like to, yeah, I'll let him address that.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. For those that don't know me, my name is Bob Weber. I'm an attorney in New Britain.
Use the use the other one because I can already tell your voice is softer.
Okay, is that better? So my name's Attorney Weber, Bob Weber. I'm from New Britain. I was the town attorney for twelve years from two thousand three, two thousand fifteen. And I have a lot of familiarity with this, which is why I offered to come and speak on their behalf. You know, I want to emphasize a couple of principles that I think are real important for for your attorney, for you, all commissioners, all boards, all citizens. You want your regulations to be consistent. You want them to be fair. You want them to be applied equally to everybody. So if I have a lot, I get the same situation as the next guy and so forth. This comports with our notion of fairness, due process, equal protection of the law. When I was the town attorney, one of the things that really bothered me was this buildable square thing. When I was doing the work, we had a buildable square which was a hundred and fifty feet in this R eighty-six zone. And the problem you had was if you had a two hundred and fifty foot lot with seventy-five feet on one side and fifty feet on the other, you couldn't, you literally couldn't build on the lot. You had to make the lots bigger. It was inconsistent with the zoning scheme. So I was pushing the commission at the time, advising them, lobbying, to try and get this changed. I wanted the commission to perhaps move in a more modern direction and get rid of the buildable square concept like so a lot many towns were doing. Or at least shrink down the the size of the buildable square. I also didn't see the reason why you would have to have it inside the setbacks. Didn't make any sense to me. Setbacks tell you where you can put your house. The buildable square is to give you a pad. Someplace that's flat and safe, or you could have a yard, a driveway. It's not meant to be co-terminous with the setbacks because they're they're different concepts. And the buildable square, like now your square is a hundred thirty-five feet here. Obviously, the house is a hundred thirty-five feet. Most houses are forty, fifty feet. You have yard. Okay, so the purpose for me coming tonight was I am going to propose that you interpret this regulation that we're dealing with differently than you have been. And I'm going to give you some reasons why. I'm going to give you some evidence that can support my suggestion. I may I want to hand out some, can I hand out a couple of things? Just may I? I know it's late. Okay, so this is this is the prior regulation. You want one more?
Okay. Received one.
So the first item I handed out was the old regulation, and I highlighted the relevant language that I want to emphasize. And the second item I handed out was the is the current regulation. Now, I highlighted to make this as quick and as efficient as possible. In the old regulation, the language that bothered me said that each building lot shall be of a size and configuration that will contain exclusive, and I'm going to emphasize this, exclusive of the side, front, and rear yards, a square the size required in the following chart. So this old regulation specifically said you had to fit in the setback. That's what that means. There's no way around it. Now I want you to look at the current regulation and the change that was made. Each potential building lot shall be of a size and configuration that it can contain somewhere on the lot, a square that contains no land with an average slope, and then it goes on to give you the dimensions. But the important point is, the commission, your predecessors, deleted the words, you know, exclusive of the front, side, and rear yard. It also added the word that I think is critical, somewhere on the lot. Now to 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 ignore that and and interpret it the way that it was proposed, and I'm going back to the meeting. I read the minutes from two meetings ago. And I understand that Attorney Capola disagrees with me on this interpretation. And the town planner disagrees with me, and I respect their opinion. They're looking at the footnote where the asterisk is, and they're saying that it's mentioned there, so it must apply to the main paragraph above. And I disagree with that. I think the asterisk is meant to deal with open space subdivisions, which weren't even addressed in the old regulation. And and I got to ask you this. Why would the commission bother to even change the language? And take out the words exclusive of the front, side, and rear and add the word somewhere if they intended this current regulation to require the square to fit in the setbacks? It doesn't make any sense. It would be irrational. You wouldn't change your regulation. It would be a meaningless change. So I think and I want to add one more thing. Now I'm going to pass that. This is a staff report that was done. What I just handed out is a staff report that was done by Ms. Riggins, your prior town planner. And I, again, I highlighted her cryptic explanation where she says, you will note that the main difference, and she's explaining to the commission the change she was trying to make. The main difference is that the squares are smaller and can be within or outside of the setback area. And when you add what her explanation is with the language that I highlighted, I understand there might be some confusion. The interpretation that's been used by Attorney Capola and by the town planner is reasonable. You can look at the footnote and say, well, it does say setbacks, so maybe that's what they meant. I'm here to propose that you can interpret it differently, and it's equally plausible, equally reasonable, and it makes sense. Why? The reason why I'm I'm troubled by this and why I came here is because it's the only town I can think of, and I did some research before I came here. Berlin is the only town where you can have a corner lot that meets the zoning requirements, two fifty. And you can't put a buildable square in it because it's a corner lot. Whereas somebody right next door to you who has the same size lot can do it because they're not on a corner. On a corner, you have to have seventy-five feet of frontage. It's totally unfair. It's inconsistent. It's not fair to applicants that came before this applicant that got shut out. That shouldn't happen. So I did some research, and what I found was most towns have gotten rid of the buildable square concept. They addressed this issue with slope differently. They use percentages of a lot. Has to be certain flatness and so forth.